The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have invocation by Reverend James Green and Councilman Flur will lead us with the pledge. Would you please stand?
Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for every good and perfect gift we actually get coming to our midst and us operate this meeting in a Christ-like manner. And whatever we do is for the good of our city and for our citizens. After it's all done, if we give you the glory and honor and the praise in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Join with him. Our pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilwoman Fuller.
President.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
President.
Councilwoman Butcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Flur.
Here.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
And Councilwoman Bowden.
Here. Tomorrow I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was Friday, November 22nd. Does any council member have earned awards, recognition of distinguished guests at this time? Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of groups. The first is the EAP, the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program. Mr. David Smith and Mr. Jay Asher, y'all can come on up now.
Good afternoon. I'm David Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program, a division of the BRF. And I have my team with me here, and I'll be going, giving you an introduction, but I want to thank Councilwoman Fuller for the invitation. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your continued support. And I just want to give you a quick update on where we are right now. This is my team. We've been in operation for a little over five years. Julie Gillum Mylam, been with me the longest. Julie's here. Karen Chomel's Business Analyst. Nick Oliver, one of my business analysts. The newest business analyst is Brett Brown. It says University of Miami, but he is from Monroe, so he's a good Louisiana boy. D'Angelo Williams is my marketing analyst. And my entrepreneur in residence is Jared Bevel from, you probably know, Red River Brewery. So this is the team that meets with entrepreneurs in Shreveport and Caddo Parish on a daily basis. Now, where did we get our start? Five years ago, we, as a public-private partnership with the city and Caddo Parish Commission, went and looked at how do we establish an accelerator in Shreveport? A lot of the successful cities had accelerators, and one of the things we wanted to do with this accelerator is create jobs, expand the local tax base, and we would focus on those technology-based companies and diversity of capital in the region, and specifically To date, our success, if you look at what we've done, I mean, we've totally, we've vetted over 889 different ideas. Of those, we provide services to 289. Unique, we have a very Shreveport model here. It's very unique. We'll help anybody regardless of where they are in their process. You can be very early on with your idea on a napkin, or you can be, hey, I gotta raise capital to kick this off. We have 70 in our portfolio that have received some form of capital. We've generated 244 jobs. And what does that mean annually to us? About $13.4 million in payroll. Total raise, $97.7 million into Shreveport-Caddo Parish. I would tell you, a lot of that is syndicated money. That money comes from outside Louisiana. We have, we have done 135 educational programs, and we do everything from junior achievement to university pitch competitions. And I always have at least one intern, and I think my current intern Mallory from Louisiana, Louisiana Tech is with us here today.
Done.
So what have we seen as far as demographics? That chart really shows you about 52% of what we see every day in Shreveport. Our minority number, we try to benchmark ourselves against the Angel Capital Association. About 25% are minority. Are women, about 15. If, and we're right on par, if not above, the national average. I'll tell you where we're a little low, and for us, you know, we need to focus in this area, and that is veteran-owned businesses. Right now, we're at about 4%. It's trending a little higher in other parts of the country, but with Boggsdale Air Force Base right across the river, really and truly, we should be seeing more of those. The industries, a lot of healthcare, as you would expect, a lot of media, entertainment in our area, a lot of tech. 21.5% is technology-based. That's our sweet spot. That's where we're focusing our efforts. And the reason we're really working hard there is those are high-paying jobs in our region that we focus on. Really and truly, that's my update. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to have any questions?
I had an extensive conversation last week with Mr. Smith, so I don't have any more questions for him right now, but I thought maybe you all might have a few, so.
Mr. Trump.
Councilman Nixon.
Mr. Smith, thank you for being here. I appreciate all the efforts of your organization as you describe them to us this afternoon. What part of your organization's funding is the contribution that the city makes every year? We give you about $200,000?
$200,000.
Okay. And what's your overall revenue?
We're right around $1 million is right where we're at.
Okay. And where does the rest of the funding come from?
The rest of the funding comes from the BRF. When we started this, about, I would tell you, between the parish and the city, about 80%, and it's now about 20% comes from private funding. The rest comes from the BRF or other sources.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
You got off easy.
Beard.
Next up, I have Strategic Action Council Minority Business Supply. Are you prepared to speak today, Taylor?
Taylor Jamison, the Executive Director for Strategic Action Council. I believe we have a resolution up today for a reallocation of some funds, and I just wanted to come before you. I've had a chance to speak to each of you over the past few weeks about our funding and the partnership that we've had over the few years, and I want to kind of touch on a few highlights of what we've done. This year, our main focus has been minority business enterprise certification. And what that entails is there was a corporate partner that we have, Caesar's Entertainment. They gave us a call, and they said, well, Taylor, we don't have a local industry here who can certify minority companies. Could you do that for us? And of course, our answer was yes. We started on this, we've got our rough draft of the actual MBE certification, but we figured, why just do this for one corporate organization? Why not expand it to everybody? And so what, what we started to do is meet with all of our municipalities. It includes the Port, City of Shreveport, City of Bossier, School Board, to see if they will come on to this and recognize this MBE certification. We plan to roll that out mid-January, and so that program is going to be going on in January. Number two, we have awarded over $10,000 in privately raised scholarships through Strategic Action Council to deserving kids in the transformation zone over this year. One thing that's going on right now, and our chairman has not made it yet, he got called into the hospital for one of his hospice patients. But one thing that we've launched this year is our apprenticeship program. We're in the pilot stages, and we're using a healthcare company who is specializing in CNA. We are trying to fill the gaps alongside of working with BIPSY and SUSLA on this to make sure that we have this type of program in our area. We've been meeting about this for a few months, and we'll be finalizing that in February. Main thing, though, business to business. So the greatest thing that you can do is be to be in Shreveport. Throughout this year, 2019, we have helped and assisted with minority companies attaining $8 million in contracts. And that ranges from companies such as Wheelon, Centerpoint, Billingsdale, to Caesar's Entertainment, as I mentioned earlier, Margaritaville, Boomtown, Brown Builders, McKenna's Brothers, Caddo Parish Schools, Parish for Caddo, et cetera. So we've been working with these different corporate entities and public entities who have supplier diversity goals to make sure that we meet those and help meet their goals. I believe y'all have everything else, but I'll open it up if anybody has any questions
Thank you for being here, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nixon.
For how long has the city given this $75,000 to your organization? How many years?
So it is, I want to say it's right at nine years now.
Okay.
This being the ninth year.
And the administration's proposition to the council is that we instead give that money to the African-American Chamber of Commerce, to my understanding?
Correct.
What would the chamber do with that money if it were to receive it?
Well, today, I won't be speaking in that capacity as far as what the chamber will be doing with that money. Just with the whole situation, it's putting me in a sticky position, so we have Mr. Darren Dixon here, who can touch on chamber specifics.
Okay. Is he present today?
He is.
I don't think everyone realizes that Mr. Jamison is currently the president of the African-American Chamber, or the chairman of the board, rather.
Correct. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, before we bring him up to the class, Mr. Jamison, a question. Where's the rest of your funding come from?
So we're funded through the parish, so we received $40,000 from them. This year, we were awarded $35,000 from Beard Foundation, and we expect, we're putting in for that same grant for next year, and corporate donations. We have about 25 different corporate partners. 75% of those typically have a supplier diversity program, but we work with the rest of them to either start a supplier diversity program or help partner.
So, not asking you on behalf of the chamber, but since you are kind of in a very awkward position here, I think, what, tell me why we should give this money to your organization as opposed to the chamber?
I don't want to get into, I don't, this shouldn't be why against the African-American Chamber, against Strategic Action Council. I think both organizations are great, and I don't want to go into why one should be awarded and why one shouldn't.
I feel like that there needs to be a distinction of, in my mind, and we talked about this, that this is the best place for the, I'm concerned about the city's investment and where our dollars go, because I've said this over and over again, and I'm going to probably restate this about 10 times between now and the next couple of weeks. We are not in a place, we are not in a place to be philanthropist in the city of Shreveport right now. Things have changed in the last 10 years, and I want to make sure that as a councilman that I am getting, for those dollars that we do send outside of the government, I want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck.
Sure.
So I think that was a fair question to ask, and we'll ask the, we'll ask the chamber that, that question and see, you know, exactly what they do. To me, I mean, I just don't know enough about either one of the organizations to really, like we talk, I just don't know. I mean, I don't see any reason to change it, but I also think that, like I said, we are not in a position in the city of Shreveport to be giving out dollars unless we know that those dollars are going to be used for something. I think your nine-year track record helps to prove that a little bit.
Sure, sure. And one thing I'll touch on, the proof is it's in the work. And so when you receive a return on your investment, when you're able to put in $8 million of minority contracts in the private sector, you, you're getting a great return on your investment. And also, as far as the process, I know that's one thing that we talked about, what pays for what? We've gone through the application process for the city of Shreveport, and we'll be adhering to all of the guidelines that the city, the city council has put forth for civic appropriations to make sure that we're in line and following the actual guidelines.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
So from the 18, you said from the eight, from this eight million, so what, in 18 or in 2019, did that come from? Or what did you produce in 18 or 19?
That's all, with, with our corporate sponsors, the ones I listed earlier, that was, that was from the metrics of us calling and working with them directly with our MBEs. Typically, what happens is we'll get a call from one of our corporate partners, and they'll let us know what projects are actually coming up. And we almost, we always act like a mentor, protege mentor program to where we will match up certain construction companies, marketing companies, whatever that particular project is, to those corporate contracts.
And the one in particular?
Yeah, all of the ones that I named earlier. I can read that off.
From eight, just one from 18 or 19?
Those are all from 18 and 19. And I can provide that for the record. It's in y'all's emails, but all the companies listed here are from this year.
All right. Is she on the book? Okay, I'm sorry. They have a question. Councilman Butcher, it's a country western song, said, "One has my heart, the other has my bill for." That's the position you need.
They both got my heart.
Which, which always relates to a sticky situation.
But the question, but I mean, I have to agree with, with Butcher, though, so the best person to answer those questions would have been you, which, which, why not one over the other? So, yeah, that would come from, yes, ma'am?
I think my issue is it shouldn't be one or the other. I think they both provide services. I think that they both have missions that should not be compared. I think that the chamber is an advocacy group in that, by, that Strategic Action Council is a capacity building group. They should never be fighting over the same pool of money to begin with. There are other funds that we might be able to look at to consider for African-American Chamber instead, and he shouldn't be sitting here having to say, this is why this group deserves it more than the other, as much as saying, this is the mission of this group versus the mission of that group, so we can decide based on their missions objectively on where we think the dollars should go.
Or vice versa.
Right.
But, Chair, we're in the position we're in, and that's one of the questions for us, Mike.
Well, we can get out of that position by looking at all of our allocations.
Oh, well, I, I, I mean, we can go through all of them and
You know, I mean...
Set a cap for all nonprofits. We can do that, but at, right now, at this particular point, we're speaking on, and I'm, I'm ready to vote on that at any time. Let me say that. But, let me mention this. So your, what part of that 75 pays your salary?
What would it pay for the 20, so it only can cover up to 15%?
Okay. Which is?
Are you asking me what my salary is? If you do the math, it's $56,000, then whatever 15% of that is, so $17,000 maybe? Not even? Maybe $12,700?
You're 56, and it could pay 17.
Does that 56 include benefits?
Correct.
So $9,500?
Yeah. Fraction of the.
Okay. All right. It's not a question.
Would it be appropriate to have Mr. Dixon come speak in the chamber? Mr. Dixon, would you?
Can I?
Sorry.
Yeah, let me, can I chat with you a little bit?
Yeah.
Quick, Mr. Jamison. So, Mr. Jamison, my office has requested documentation from you to show exactly what impact you're having on the community. As Councilman Butcher said, we have to be very careful with the dollars that we spend. In those documents that we received from you, actual granular breakdown of the specific company that you worked with and the contracts that were yielded wasn't provided. We could tie no, like, phone calls to numbers or any of that other stuff, so it was lack of documentation was the reason why we said that, or we thought that it would be much, money would be much better spent with the African-American Chamber.
Sure.
They provided a great detail of documentation, programming that they had, where their funding was coming from, et cetera, et cetera. So the, for instance, can you go back over the numbers for, you said the parish gives you $40,000, and who else gives you funding?
Correct. It changes from year to year, but this year, we've been awarded $75,000 from the city, $40,000 from the parish, $35,000 from Beard Foundation.
Yeah.
And quarter fiscal year 2019, correct? Correct.
Okay. So the, does the parish has the same stipulation with your, for instance, your pay that the city does, being a public entity?
50%.
50?
50. Half.
What, what do you?
That's their stipulation, 50%.
Of your salary? The parish can pay up to 50% of your salary?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And it's, and it's not just for the salary, it's based off of programming.
Okay. Okay. So, so the Beard Foundation's funding, because to cover the gap, if only nine, 90, you know, $9,500 of what the city's providing to you goes towards your salary, then the parish would have to pay, and it's 50% of that, you got 20, 28 plus nine, you'd get 37, so a, I mean, about $20,000 or $35,000 is coming from the Beard Foundation. And that doesn't leave much money for other programming? You, you know, you heard EAP get up a minute ago, and we provide a very small piece of their actual budget?
Sure.
And that's what we have to do. We have to make sure that the organizations that our dollars are going into were supplementing budgets and were not taking the brunt of the budget.
Right.
So that's the calculations. I want the council to know that were our calculations from our side of why we made these decisions. It's, it's like data-driven policy. The data that we got, we were able to make the decision based off of it. So if you can get us more granular details on the companies that you've worked with, and we can, we can look at these numbers, we can audit these numbers like we did for the African-American Chamber and be as detailed with them, then we'd be happy to change these numbers. But at the time with the information that we have, that's the reason why we made the decision.
Sure. And for the record, we've been trying to meet all year to make sure that we show exactly what metrics that need to be shown. We have a meeting this week, but it's in December, so I would love for, in 2020, if we do come to some sort of an agreement, for us to strengthen that partnership throughout the whole year.
Yeah. And we've met. I mean, we had this, I asked you for the doc, we asked for the documentation, I think, in August, September, and again, we asked for...
March 22nd.
What was it?
March 22nd.
We asked you for the documentation in March?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so, you know, in March, when you give us that, that feedback, we need to see, we needed to see those numbers. And that's exact, when we, as soon as we reached out to the chamber, that's the detailed degree of numbers that we got. So, I mean, we can, we can send an email to draw the criteria or send an example of the criteria, but, you know, we need as many details as possible, and that's not specific to you, that's objective to any organization that we're providing funds to.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice President.
I'll conclude my remarks, Mr. Jamison, at the podium by observing that there's been some discussion of a, of a sticky situation or a conflict that arises from the fact that he is affiliated with both the African-American Chamber and the organization for which he is speaking today. That's not a conflict of his making, that's not his fault, and I don't want anyone to come away from this thinking that Mr. Jamison has, has done something he should not have, he just happens to be involved with two or the organizations who are competing for funding, and appropriately, I think, he has another representative from the chamber here to speak to us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Because I'm Darren Dixon, and in full disclosure, I'm on both boards. I'm on the Strategic Action Council Board as well as the African-American Chamber. When I heard of the chamber possibly getting funding, I was excited and, because it was kind of historic, because we've never received any support from the city of Shreveport since our existence. But when I heard how the funding was coming, I was conflicted because it kind of pits two organizations that have somewhat similar intent, but, but very totally different missions. And as I've been talking to the board at Strategic Action Council as well as at the chamber, I want to seek to see how can we bring a resolution that would benefit both organizations? And that's where I stand today. What does the chamber, the chamber has done a lot and has grown over the years, and, but we are still in, have a challenge of growing and reaching our fullest potential because they're, because of resources, but as would most minority organizations, well, we could, we have so many ideas and so much work, but we tend to get under-resourced. You can look at HBC, I could go on and on about organizations and the disparity in resources. But my plea to you gentlemen and lady today, and hopefully the administration could, could buy into the fact that we would like to see some resolution that not hurts the minority supply institute, but, but, but helps both organizations. I do understand, sitting in your position, especially with the budget concerns you have going forward, that you have to be wiser in your investments. I understand that. So I would stand to say that I don't think you would be making a bad invest, investment, investing in either one of the organizations, because I think both of them do great work and bring some return to this community. So that's my say. If you have questions for me, I'll, I'll address those or get out of your way.
Thank, thank, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming up and kind of explaining the difference in the two organizations. But I do think that you did say one thing. I think your ultimate goal is the same, it's just figuring out the way that we need to allocate the funding to help y'all out. And I think that regardless, both of your objectives are worthy of, of our stewardship, I think. It's just trying to decide, and I think that historically, we have, we have relied on the mayor to make this decision. But I also think that it's a new council and a new mayor, and I think that there's some things that we can look into. So I just appreciate y'all both coming and giving your side of it, and we don't actually vote on it today, so, you know, we'll have some time to consider it and see what we need to do. But I want to assure you that the money will be used for the objective of these two organizations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more?
If I have anything to do, I'm only one, but if I have anything to do with it, it'll be used for that.
Appreciate it. Anybody else with a question? I appreciate you all saying.
Councilman Flur?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as you recall, last council meeting, I had made inquiry about making the motion to rescind. The city attorney's office had been asked to prepare an opinion regarding whether or not motion to rescind is proper in regards to the city council's decision on MPC case The city attorney has opined and said that an opinion has been rendered in regards to, against my motion to rescind. Mr. Chairman, Councilman Chairman Jerry Bowman Jr., I appeal this decision to you and ask that you reconsider and render a decision as Chair of the council.
I always respect City Attorney Coria and her opinions, and I...
Therefore, those of you in the audience here for that, that motion to rescind will not be taken up today or anytime going forward. It has been put to rest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration of my request.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Flurry, I'd just like to say, thank you for being brave enough, for being stood enough to make that comment as to what you just did, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Scott Martinez from NLP to make a presentation
This is actually only agenda with Inferno?
What?
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
If you'd like to wait till later in the meeting?
Yeah, with Mr. Organic.
You can, but you'd like to present now and be able to depart, or?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Whatever, whatever the council, this body deems appropriate.
Why don't you say what you need to say now, and that'll save you some time?
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
With, with your approval, I'm happy to do that, sir, with the councils. I'm Scott Martinez, President of the North Louisiana Economic Partnership. Also have with me today Alan Organic, President and Honored, excuse me, of Inferno Manufacturing, located here in Shreveport. I'm before you today to discuss an amendment to the fact sheet on their industrial tax exemption program, which was done last year. There was a discrepancy between the amount that the state represent, that's on the state documentation, and the local documentation. On the local documentation, the value's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which was representative of the value of one machine. They ended up doing two machines, which was the initial intent, so, which drove that value up to over a million dollars. So they actually did more investment than, than was in the original documentation at the local level. And this is, today, I want to bring it before the council to, to get that amended, so it's in, so it's consistent with the amount that the Cato Commission amended last week at their meeting, and that's, that's at the state of Louisiana for their consideration. Just to give you some background, many of y'all are new in the council, since this was voted on last year. Mr. Organic's grandfather started this company in Shreveport in nineteen twenty-two. It's a family-owned business. You know, they anticipated having twenty-five employees when they did this initial application. They're up to twenty-seven employees. If you look at the amount that they pay, irregardless of any abatement or exemption, just to the city of Shreveport, their taxes every year, their property taxes are over seventeen thousand dollars. So they've been here since nineteen twenty-two, they've paid taxes, their payroll is way north of a million dollars, they provide benefits to their employees at a hundred percent, as far as their health care, they provide to the employees and their families, health care as well at a much reduced rate. You know, a lot of discussion when they were redoing the ITAP two years ago with Governor Edwards' executive order, was this was really predominant to big business and multinational corporations. This is an example of a family-owned, small business in Shreveport that's able to utilize this incentive and grow their family business here in Shreveport. They've been, from my perspective, and everyone's, I've talked to in Shreveport, they've been good corporate citizens and, and good members of our, our community. So I would ask that, that this council considers amending that fact sheet to taking into consideration that new amount that's, that's representative of the value of both of those machines, rather than the one. The Cato Commission and the Board of Commerce and Industry have both approved those higher amounts.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Nicholson.
Mr. Martinez, thank you as always for being here, I'm very appreciative of the work your organization does for Northwest Louisiana and for the city of Shreveport. I made this request to a member of your staff, but I'll, I'll make it in public on the record. I'd like to make sure that every time NLP asks us to take action on a potential tax exemption, that it provide an economic impact analysis?
Yes.
So that we have data on which we can base our decision. You know, there's, there's quite a lot of has-been, quite a lot of discussion about whether local entities like ours should have a role in this process, but we do, of course, by order of Governor Edwards, and I want to make sure that we responsibly exercise that responsibility. And you have provided an economic impact analysis in this case. I, I note that it indicates that we are, over the next five years, neither saving nor, nor spending money on this exemption, that the net impact is zero. But I would encourage my colleagues, particularly in cases of exemptions that are of more significant financial impact to the city, to require that those exemptions be justified, because when we give an organization a tax exemption, we are giving away the city's money. Thank you.
And for reference, we'll have at least two more before this body within the next four or five months. And I'm, Mr. Flurry, you're very familiar with one, and we'll be bringing some more before this body that are, expand, local companies that are expanding in the city of Shreveport. One, excuse me, one that's a new company, and the other is doing significant expansion in the city.
All right. That it? You want that? Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Mayor Perkins, do you have any distinguished guests at this time?
Yes, I do. I, first, I want to call up, today we have Mr. Wade Davis, my appointee for the position of Airport Director in the audience. He's here and can answer any questions to the council you may have prior to confirmation. He will also be with us tomorrow. Mr. Davis, you would come up?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. If, is that all? Councilman Butcher?
We, we actually met last night.
Yes, we did.
It was very interesting, we were having dinner at the same, at the same place. I'm glad you're here, glad that you're, wanting to make sure you brought your new home. I, I know that it's been a point of contention with the airport over the last year, at least for us newly-elected council members, and, and I think the mayor as well has worked very hard to, to try to, to accommodate a lot of things that have been going on at our downtown airport. I'm sure, I, I just would like to ask, you're aware of everything that's going on there, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
You mind scaring him off?
No, I'm just trying to make sure he didn't run, so.
Just make sure he buys his house first.
Yeah, exactly. I, I just, you know, I, I'm assuming that you and the mayor have discussed, Mayor, this, all the issues going on and where we, where we are now. I think the mayor has worked pretty hard over the last two or three months to, to work with the FAA, so I just-
Year, year.
Well, I mean, but the last few months, you've really been down-
No, year.
A year.
Yeah, yeah, year, since I got in office.
But I, I just wanted to make sure we knew that, and then I, I think there's a couple other things. Back when we first took office, in fact, one of the, the first votes that we had was to make the regional airport a international airport, and from what I understand, you're from an international airport, which is a little bit smaller than regional.
I am, yes.
But, so you're familiar with that and able to, to do that. I think my biggest thing with the airport is this, I would like to see us become international with cargo and things like that, and I think where we're at, that, we're in a perfect spot to be able to grow our airports, and to bring industry like Scott and, and LEP, and to bring industries here because of our airport and, and the expansions and things that we're doing. So, anyway, just welcome you, and if anybody else has any question?
Well, Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, I normally don't ask questions, but the last person we had, I was prepared to vote on her the next day, and she left. So I just wanted to know if you could commit to staying at least another day.
I'm honored.
So, that's, that's my question, I mean, so.
Shreveport Airport, both regional and downtown, it's, it's got some great bones, too. There's excellent opportunity for expansion there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you.
And we will be voting to confirm tomorrow.
It's, yes? Am I correct about that? Yes, sir. All right. Mr. Davis, you, the fact that you're here today, I appreciate that, and I, I do appreciate the fact, your willingness to come and, and to help serve, and keep our airports up into the position that they need to be in. So, again, I just want to say thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your team, reaching out to Mr. Davis. You was my first choice, so let me say that. I don't know what the mayor was doing, but I just want to say you was my first choice. Thank you. Thank you.
Messy, messy. By the way, the airport is in my district, so.
Wonderful.
All right. That's it, that's all, Councilman Bradford, anything for you, sir?
No, sir.
All right. That'd be it. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank you for all your hospitality, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, too. Administration, anyone else?
Oh, yes, sorry. I want to address the letter that I got from Councilman Butcher on Friday, December sixth, in the same day of the press conference with Councilman Flurry and Nicholson. The letter's encouraging us to reach out to the Louisiana State Police, as well as other local law enforcement agencies to assist the Shreveport Police Department in efforts to keep all of Shreveport citizens safe in light of the recent rash of senseless violent crimes that have happened in our city. Public safety remains my top priority. I think Councilman Flurry and I, we sat in that joint task force meeting, I think, the second, second quarter. We, we have joint task force meeting with all federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies pretty regularly, but when there is a rash of events like this, we will break that tradition and, and reach out and bring more resources in. So I too am appalled at the recent criminal acts that have taken place in our city, and one loss of life is one too many. However, I want everyone to know that we are already working with the Louisiana State Police and other law, local law enforcement agencies. We wrote, myself and the police chief have written letters requesting for resources from those state agencies as well, and we, it's not just lip service that they're saying, we're supporting you, we're supporting you. They actually have been, been providing bodies. Clearly, for security reasons, we don't want to talk about how many additional assets that they're providing us to, to assist us in our neighborhoods, but we are working together, and we will continue our efforts. Our homicide numbers continue to go down, but one is, again, one too many. Our efforts, we will continue to fight till we have zero crime. We will continue that fight. As impossible as many say it is, our efforts will continue to, to push in that direction. So I welcome the support of council, as well as the offer to put more money behind our public safety efforts. As I've always said, we have to do this and work together. The more voices from council that we have, the louder our voices in this community. So thank you for your efforts, and we'll continue to stay on it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, thank you for the response.
Mr. Harris here? Anyone have anything relative to property standards from Mr. Harris?
Real quick, Mr. Harris, did you go over there on Gideon and Bethany and all that and look at some of those things we talked about? I rode through there, and there's just too many to list.
I sent the inspector over, and I'll send you an update tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, public, I think that's it. Is that it? Anyone have anything else? I think I sent you my list. That's it? We have a public hearing tomorrow, on Resolution one thirty-two, one thirty-two of nineteen? Correct. That is tomorrow, okay. And Ms. Jones, will there be any legislation added on tomorrow?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. And we have a, I'm sorry, one thirty-two?
One sixty-five to be added, you say?
No, that's on the public hearings, and what will be added tomorrow?
Resolution one sixty-five honoring the life and legacy of civil rights pioneer Dr. Seal Simpkins.
Sixty-five, okay. Do that tomorrow, okay. We have to follow, we have to do that tomorrow, right?
What?
That's on tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
We have to file a request to speak.
Mr. Chairman, first, I have a request to speak from Mr. Tom Marsino, Mr. Bev Francis, and Mr. Alvin Myster. I assume they no longer care to speak, given the disposition of the matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Mr. John Johnson. Mr. Johnson, if you'd state your name and your address, please, sir, you have three minutes.
Name is John Johnson. Address is one six two seven Fulton Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. Alonso Sanders, trying to get his building resurrected, and I'm all for it, because the building will serve the community, especially for the young, the younger generation. The younger generation, they have, a lot of the guys don't have anything to do but hang out and do illicit things that, you know, that brings the crime rate up. Mr. Sanders' building would serve as an entertainment complex, it's going to teach the young guys how to invest in property, real estate, how to go to the auction and flip cars, as well as housing, a recording music studio for the entertainment industry. And I think that would be a big plus for the community, and giving those guys something to do, and something to look forward to, and provide a little hope for them.
Let's add a question. So, I heard what you said, it will be dispossessed for us, so it still will be a used car?
No.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. That's what, that's, that's, that's what we had got, that's all I had got, is I wanted to make sure that that was an add-on to it.
Well, I'd like to, Chairman Bowman, I thought this property was requested to be resumed for use as a used car lot, is there going to be something more? I, I just don't, I don't know, I want to understand what the request is.
What, what, will it be more?
Futuristically down the line, I got plans for it to be something more, which is something like a school.
Why don't you come up?
Yeah. Well, I'd be happy to call.
Right now, it's just a part of it.
Does he put it in? Okay. All right. Sorry, unless you have something more.
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Jeremiah McDade. Sir, if you could please state your name and address, I would appreciate it.
Jeremiah McDade, fifteen forty-eight West Fifty-Eighth Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Basically, well, I'm employed by this guy. Maybe a few years back, I was a little homeless. He gave me, taught me financial awareness, job training, so I'm pretty sure that when he get his building up and running, that's going to be part of it also. Me being here is, that's, those were my basic functions for, for coming, is to make sure that y'all know he is employing people, and he, he is beneficial to what's going on right now, in that, in that particular area, basically.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Kevin Teller.
Kevin Teller, forty thirty-five Dixon Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'd like to say, I'm just a neighbor of Alonso, and I work with him sometimes, and he seems to be a good influence on some of the younger guys that he hires, and I've met quite a few of them since I've been working with Alonso, and the build is a good idea, and I think, trying, trying to say the right word, I can't think of the right word. Escapes me.
Okay. Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Derrick, and I apologize, I can't read your last name, but it's concerning the same matter.
Would you get out here with this, this? Yes, sir.
State your name and address, if I could?
Derrick Thrash, five oh six West Seventy-Sixth Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Alonso is a good pillar to the community. He has a lot of aspects for his lawn services, that's not just, it's just not going to be a car lot, there's also going to be a lawn service. And me, myself, I'm, I work construction, I have a small business, a contract with him for the lawn services, it's just not going to be- It's just not going to be a car lot up there because I plan on opening up in the building. I plan on having a lawn services through his conjunction and a roofing contract through his conjunction. And he is a good pillar to the community and his social liability is going to bring a whole lot of income to the Shreveport community and it will be a good asset for his building to go up.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Mr. Merle Lane, if I'm reading that first name correctly. Hello, sir.
Merle Lane, 4601 Dixie Boulevard. All I got to say, I've been in the military, I've been known as Mr. Sanders over 20 something years, and what he's trying to do is a helpful thing to the community. And I'm all in favor of him building a new building. I'm a Vietnam veteran, give the man a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bill Weiner.
I live at number two Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm here to ask something. I didn't really know how to do it except to come here. There's been a lot of input on the development along Cross Bowl, hours and hours promoting it, very little input from the city citizens to address the deficiencies and how it might bankrupt Shreveport in the future. I'm going to ask you to consider having a special council meeting with only one subject on a different day to discuss the impacts of doing this and discuss the problems back and forth, not a three-minute thing. It's information so that you can make an informed decision. This person says do this, but this person happens to know reason not to do it. You can hear all the information and then go forward from that. So I'm asking you to try to look into setting up a special meeting because it's so important for our future and it's so large and it involves so much city property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, my final request to speak is from Matt Arundel, but there's not an indication as to whether that's for today or tomorrow. I don't see Mr. Arundel in the audience and so we'll assume he's coming tomorrow. Those are all the requests.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment really quick on some of the series of speakers?
Mayor Perkins?
I just want to thank Mr. Sanders. I don't get to vote on zoning matters, but clearly you have an impact on the neighborhood and the community. I want to thank you for having that positive impact. Whatever you got going on, it's working, you touching a lot of lives. So I just want to say, you know, keep up the good work.
I appreciate you. I had a request to speak that was in here. Did you get it?
I did not see it, but if you submitted one, Mr. Sanders, on time, I'm going to hear from you.
I didn't get it, but I don't have an objection. Who's coming up to speak if no one else does?
I wanted to submit this to the council.
You know, I started this building 2016 and due to a lot of things I'm being put through, a huge hassle. So it seems one of the main persons, Elizabeth Swain, opposes my building and I would like to say that she has no legal residence in that area and that they say that they oppose me because they want to keep the area historic, but legally according to the UDC, it's not a part of the historic district. It's actually an opportunity zone, which was actually created for development in minority, low-income areas, underdeveloped areas. So part of the UDC, another opposer, which Ms. Swain got to help her, the Fertitas, it is a historic building, but it's not part of the historic district. I'm kind of afraid here, to be honest with you. I keep getting things from my friends saying, "Hey, don't come up here and oppose certain people, don't say certain things because you don't want to make enemies within the MPC, the city council, they'll keep you from doing certain things." But me, I always got to follow my heart and if I have to be a martyr, then that's what it is. So I want to put this on record, certain people, officials that I feel have a conflict of interest and have showed abuse of power to me and malicious intent, part of the MPC. But speaking on the city council, I would like to ask, and I don't know because I'm familiar with certain court procedures, but not with the MPC, I would like to ask for the chair or whoever would be in charge to call the executive session to remove Levett Fuller from the voting tomorrow. I got an email of public record from the MPC, which stated to Levett Fuller, Thad Thrash, and the Fertitas, and I quote from Mrs. Elizabeth Swain, "Guys, I need your help." And I just don't feel like that Elizabeth Swain should be able to summon and shut down a business at will, and if so, I would have to consider her the mob and Levett Fuller must be Jimmy Hoffa.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask the speaker to suspend, please? Under our rules of order, Section 111, you cannot call out a city councilman, like this gentleman just did. And I don't mind him coming and speaking and saying whatever, but you cannot use this forum as a purpose of, in Section 111.
Okay. I wasn't aware of the rule.
I ask the chair to rule on that, please.
Okay.
So I'll suspend that.
Please, we got the, we have the sheet that you submitted, so no names.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm being told I need to build a studio by certain people. That's not what I want to do. I'm thinking it's maybe because I'm a rapper and certain people feel like I should sing, dance, and rap, but I want to be a businessman. I aspire to have a multi-million dollar company. I do not want to build a studio. I don't feel like I should be forced to build a studio. I want to do a car lot first, multiple other uses later on down the line as I gain income. I have a lot of people that will be here tomorrow in support of this. I've already had several people writing letters, possibly about 50 people show up to speak during the MPC, and several will be here tomorrow. I don't know how many could speak, but I plan on coming with a lot of people. The community is behind me in the area, not only that, but the entire Shreveport, and I just feel that no decision should be made or predicated on power, influence, or friendship, but ethically, it should be made on equality and the rights of a citizen to use his land for...
Sir, the clerk has advised me that your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to let, I think it's under appeals, am I right?
Yes, sir.
The last under agenda?
I don't see it.
Let's see. Let's find it.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford?
President from MPC, you can come in.
He is watching, he had, oh, well.
Stephen Jean is here.
Is this only, is this only agenda?
It's only.
Is it only?
It's the zoning matter.
It's either affirm or...
What is it, 187? 188.
188.
Or reverse the MPC's decision.
Stephen Jean, Deputy Director of the Metropolitan Complaint Commission.
Mr. Jean, what can you relate to regarding this gentleman and his concern for rezoning?
Well, yeah, I can tell you what his request was, although he did say he wanted to have a used car lot. His request was to restore the zoning that once was in place on that property prior to the UDC, which was B3. The equivalent to that is C3, so he would like to have that restored. There are a number, of course, in any district, there are a number of permitted uses in a district and some of those require special use permit. In this particular case, even if he was to get that zoning restored, he would have to obtain a special use permit for that specific use.
And what's the position of the MPC on this request?
To recommend denial.
Recommend denial?
Yes, sir.
And the reason was, again?
I believe it had to do with the compatibility of the area and the desire for that to be, it's more residential in character. There's only one, on that side of the street, there's really not any, any commercial enterprises currently there. It's primarily residential, although there's quite a number of vacancies. And so the purpose, the reason behind what they were doing was to listen to a lot of people from the, from the area that were concerned about the, about that particular use and a more intense use than what the character seems to be right at the current time.
Did you, what other factors did you consider? Did the staff as well as the board, was they consistent in their, in their position?
Well, other, other things that they considered was the master plan, land use map also showed this as a residential in character rather than as a commercial area. So can't speak to what, how particular individuals voted on that, but to see the consensus of the, what was put on record, that was the reason for, for denial. Can I answer any other questions?
Councilman Green, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Are you familiar with the, he brought up an email that Liz Swain sent. Are you familiar with that? Did y'all get an email from?
Well, I know he's had a public record request that we were providing certain emails. I vaguely remember an email. It's not unusual for the DDA to express concerns about land use issues regarding something that's either near or in downtown, so I don't remember.
How close?
I didn't pull that up before the meeting and so it's really difficult for me to speak to that in any detail, sir.
So how close is that to downtown?
It's basically on the French. What you have, as you're leaving downtown and going down on Common Street and you, and you get on Fairfield, so that's right on the edge of downtown.
It's on the edge, but not downtown?
It's not within the DDA boundaries.
Okay. Okay. So it's not within the DDA boundary?
It's not within the DDA boundary specifically, no, sir. And it's not within the historic district that it's for downtown either.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nicholson, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, this does not concern the merits of the appeal that Mr. Sanders has brought on the zoning issue before the council tomorrow, but I do want to note for the record that Mr. Sanders has made statements on social media that come very close to being criminal threats against an individual who is involved in this process and, and works on behalf of the city tirelessly for its improvement. Specifically, there's a reference to destroying everyone and everyone who's plotting against him. There's a reference to doing that with no limits and then declaring all-out expletive war on this individual and anyone with her expletive expert. I'm not inviting a response from anyone in the audience, and again, I will rule on this appeal tomorrow based on its merits, but I will say to anyone involved in this matter that threatening city employees does not improve your standing with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
I didn't threaten. I thought somebody said I could talk. I'm sorry. I haven't seen the document that you referred to.
Yes, sir.
I trust your opinion in that it was very offensive and, and did you say threatening as well?
Yes, it appears to be a threat to me, Councilman. I certainly read it that way.
Okay.
Threatening to destroy someone and declare war on them. It just, it concerned me and it is, it is not the sort of discourse that we need.
Certainly it's concerning. I would, you know, I mean, we're going to take this up tomorrow and my consideration would reflect what I've ascertained from, from the incident that you mentioned, so I look, I look to look at that document.
Thank you, sir. I'll share it with the council.
Thank you.
Councilman Green?
No, I was pointing at Councilman Fuller.
Okay. If you're around, I'm going to speak to you, Mr. Sanders. If you, if you're around, if not, I won't speak to you.
I'll stay.
Okay.
I want to put on record, I didn't threaten anyone.
Oh, Chair?
I was, okay. Councilman Fuller?
This area is actually in the Downtown Development District. It is.
That's what I'm just getting the message on.
So for the record, it is in the DDA?
It's in the DDD, the Downtown Development District.
Development District, yeah. The Development District.
I just want to make sure for the record that is confirmed.
That's confirmed.
Okay. All right. We have the following executive appointments to be considered on tomorrow. Airport director, we just met, Mr. Wade Davis. Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority Board, Mr. Parker Brown. Shreveport Boja Convention and Tourism Board, Mr. Matt Snyder. And Catopirish Port Commission, Mr. Joshua Williams. We all met them at the last meeting. There are no items under consent, a gentle introduction if they adopt it. Ms. Jones, you can proceed with regular resolutions on second reading and final pass themselves.
Resolution 132 stating the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Twin Coles Investments LLC participated in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Evasion Program. Resolution 149 authorizing the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Catopirish Coroner's Office or to decommission structures. Resolution 151 requesting the city council to extend the time to complete the investigation of a Shreveport Fire Department employee in accordance with Louisiana Revise Statute Mr. Chairman, this is one that the administration is requesting to be removed after the city attorneys conferring with the Chief of Fire Department.
Okay.
Resolution 152 is authorizing the mayor to accept an in-kind donation worth $19,250 in value from the UVH Foundation to the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department. Resolution 153 is authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Theater of the Performing Arts. Resolution 154 authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit for the city for fiscal year January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. Resolution 155 is authorizing a pipeline and roadway right-of-way servitude agreement for the purpose of allowing Cross Lake Gathering LLC to use the surface of the land to develop the oil, gas, and other liquid and gaseous hydrocarbons and under in which may be produced from the land and other land in the vicinity thereof, city-owned property described as that portion of Section 5 Township 17 North Range 15 West Line below the 172-foot contour of Cross Lake located in Catopirish, Louisiana, with geographic number 171505-000-0008-00, and to authorize the mayor to execute said roadway right-of-way and servitude agreement with Cross Lake Gatherers LLC. This is another, Mr. Chairman, I think that we had discussions in the Infrastructure Committee that this would be removed also. Resolution 157 is authorizing adoption of the revised City of Shreveport's Port Title 6 program. Resolution 158 is providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in the City of Shreveport, City of Louisiana, on Saturday, November 16, 2019, and to promulgate the results thereof. Resolution 159 is amending the fact sheet for Resolution Number 18 of 2018, which approved Inferno Manufacturing for participating in the Industrial Tax Exemption Program at 115 Rico Street to... 115 Rico Street to reaffirm the council's decision in Resolution Number 18 of 2018. Resolution 160 is recognizing Corporal Ernestine Tina Morris for her heroism in saving a citizen from a burning house. Resolution 161 is recognizing Michael Jenkins for his heroism in saving the citizens from, a citizen from a burning house. Resolution 162 is recognizing the Signal 51 Group for the work and support they provide to the Shreveport Fire Department and other public safety agencies in Cattle Parish. Resolution 163 is to allocate funds to specific non-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted in other charges in the 2020 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. Resolution 164 is to remove funding for the Shreveport Boja African American Chamber of Commerce budgeted in other charges and fund the Minority Supplier Institute in the 2020 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
All right, Counselman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to, and I was part of the meeting on, on last week regarding this, uh, 155. I still have some, 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 some questions that I need to ask. Mr. Furlough, uh, if you will. It was, it was discussed in detail, I, you know, the council, the members, uh, I thought was diligent in, in responding to some of the concerns. Mr. Furlough, I, I'm still, I'm still sort of, uh, concerned about what's, what's, what's threatening our water supply. Uh, you mentioned at the meeting, uh, the infrastructure meeting about some of the, some of the visual hazards that, 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 that come, come into the equation. You mentioned the railroad, if there's a derailment in those, those cars with chemicals and other substances may come into the water, and that could, that could, that could be a threat. You mentioned, uh, I-220, the bridge where tankers or other, uh, transportation apparatus that may somehow spill over into the, into the water supply. You mentioned, uh, an underground pipeline that is currently in the, that's running in the, uh, in the, in the, in the lake. What, what exactly is that, is that apparatus, that, that, that pipeline that's currently running in the lake? What is that, what does that consist of?
Is it pipe material or what is, what material?
No, no, you, you mentioned that there is already a pipeline that's running beneath Cross Lake, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I believe it's transmitting natural gas.
Nat, it's trans, it's transmitting natural gas?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the same, the same natural gas that, that, uh, that is being, that is being, that is being presented to, to, for the, for the, for the, so, to that, that, uh, the company is, is now presenting a request to, to have a pipeline, is that right? It's same, same, same element?
That's my understanding.
Same substance, okay. Uh, but this, this pipeline would not run underneath the, the, uh, the surface of the, of the lake, is that right? It'll run, it'll run on the, on the boundaries of it?
The one being proposed?
Yes.
It's being proposed to be run under the lake?
Under the lake?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, certainly, let me ask you, wait, before I ask you my other question. Um, these type of, these type of, uh, developments and, and, um, placement of, 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 of material that, that would carry things like gas and oil, is, is, are, are they regulated by the EPA in regards to Shreveport? For instance, if this was a danger to the water supply Shreveport, would there be a, a red flag in, 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 in a, in a proposal to halt this development?
Uh, I can't really answer, but I, I have learned that working with federal agencies, they're not always going to step in and, uh, make decisions for the local entities. There's, there's times that local entities have to make decisions for themselves.
Yeah, and I think, I think it was mentioned even at the meeting that Louisiana has always been sort of lenient on, on oil and gas operations and oftentimes put, uh, our citizens at risk of, for profit. Uh, but I, I, I find it, I find it, this mean, find it hard to, to believe that out of all the, all of the hazards that, that we face in regards to, uh, jeopardizing our water supply, that, that, that a gas apparatus would be the most threatening when I think it will, it will find its way through pockets and it evaporates. I mean, it's just like leaving a gas line on or something, long as it's not contained in the house where it could blow up, it's going to evaporate into the atmosphere. And I'm just, I'm just trying to feel comfortable that, uh, denying something is, is, is in the interest when other items, when other threats are not being looked at, looked at the seriousness on the same, on the same level. I've always been concerned about, uh, I think there's at least 12 to 15 freight trains that go up and down that corridor of, of Cross Lake into the KCS Yard daily, and the threat of, of derailment to, to spill into the water supply would, uh, would cause, what, what dangers that would cause. And yet, we, we never talk about that. We never talk about, uh, I know there's a hole in bin for runoff from the, from the bridge, but, but, but we, we don't talk about if, if an 18-wheeler would accidentally crash through the, the guard railings and splash into the water, and, and what, what, what would our response be as a city to, to protect our citizens from, from any substances that may threaten our water supply? Are, are those things talked about anywhere?
Yes, sir.
They are? And there are, there are contingency plans in place to address those if they happen?
Yes, sir.
So, give me an example, what, what, what would happen if a spill of, of, of a box car?
Well, I'm, I'm not the expert to speak on this. Wes Weish, uh, with Environmental Services, he is. But, but we have had discussions after that infrastructure meeting, uh, in the past, they have had mock spills where, um, you know, it's, it's just like fire and police have mock exercises. If there was a spill, they have procedures that, that are in place for everybody to take action.
Okay. So, give me the worst-case scenario. Will, will a spill of any magnitude, we have the, we have the lake, it's, you know, like I said at the meeting, we have, um, drainage endless into the lake all over, all the way from here to Morning's Boy. If something was to go into the lake, will it, will it affect the treatment plant where our water is purified? Uh, or is that two different, two different, uh, relations? Water supply?
It, it's, it's hard to say, you know, what's going in the lake, what actions are taken, it's what procedures are in place. It's, it's hard to just give a, a blanket answer to that.
Well, I can't, I can't go any further because I would, I would think.
So, if, yeah, I mean, if something spills, it could, it may or may not affect.
Who would be able to answer questions in regards to the safety of our people and our water? I, I, I find it, I find it ingenious that we can't get those type of answers. Who can answer those questions?
Ms. Thelston's coming up.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Thelston's coming up.
Well, I, I mean, we should, we should be.
Yeah, so. So.
Uh, real quick, for the I-220 deal, if, if anybody recalls, it's been around a little while, there're catch basins on the east side and west side, but, I mean, are those tested? Do they work? Does the, you know, it's, I think by ideally, I, I, if I remember correctly, that those catch basins on either end are supposed to take whatever product runs.
Runs into the.
That's why the bridge is like this.
Goes into the.
Right, it's supposed to go into those catch basins. So, that might be another thing. The other thing that was mentioned that I think, Patrick, that, that maybe is incorrect, that the original line is a distribution line, which has already been treated gas. This is a gathering line, which is going to bring in, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct. This is a gathering line that will be bringing in untreated natural gas. So, the treated natural gas already has the smell that's added to it that lets you know that there's a leak, and it doesn't have any of the residual condensation and things like that, and petroleum that could be in a gathering line. So, I think it's a little, it's two different things. Now, my whole thing is if, if D N R, who I think we referred this to, that, that they were, you know, Mr. Pratt and people that came are going to get D N R to come and tell us what the, what the true risk of it is, but I think to go with Counselman, and, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to bring this couple of points of it, I think the biggest thing is, I'm, I'm with Counselman Bradford, we, I, I would like to know where we are as far as the potential hazard, not only with pipelines, but everything else. Those trains going along that, that, that trussel that they've got is, is very concerning to me every time I see one. So, anyway, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again.
So, so your question, if, if anything spills in the lake, is it a, is it a hazard to the water? It's just, it's a very vague question.
I'm sorry, Patrick, sit a little closer and, and repeat that again. Repeat your question.
Your question of if, if any contaminant gets into the, into the lake?
Into the lake.
It's going to affect the drinking water?
Yes.
It's, it's a very difficult question to answer.
It's never happened, you think, you saying, are you saying it never happened?
Well, pollutants get in the lake all the time.
Oh, I, I know it. I mean, we can't drink it untreated, you know, we'll die, but I'm saying, if it spills into the lake and it, and there's, there's, there's an apparatus that controls what comes into the, into the treatment plant, the purifying plant, I mean, will that, will that eradicate the threat of unsafe water? That's what I'm trying to understand. Can that treatment plant dissolve the threat of unsafe water by the way we treat it? You don't know?
I'm thinking this is something that our environmental engineer, Wes Weish, can better address. He's not in the chambers at this point, um, but if we can get him to, um, to get responses to you, would that be appropriate?
Well, certainly, but at the same time, uh, there's certain questions, and all due respect, there's certain questions that should be readily available on demand. I mean, when you, especially when you're talking about threats to, to various aspects of the city. But I, I guess I would have to yield and understand that we don't have those answers, and, and, uh, if Mr. Weish can, can relate those, that'd be fine.
Sure, and we can, can, if Wes is in the building or we can get him here, that would be helpful. That way, we can get the information to you, um, this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Counselman Flurry?
Uh, Chairman Jerry Bowman, Jr., I'd like to ask at this time, I don't have, I, I don't get the opportunity to serve on this prestigious, uh, uh, committee that helped, although I was there and did hear most of the discussion, uh, would it be possible, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, a map perhaps could be attached to this legislation, but just merely showing that line going through the duct lines and that north end of the lake up there, where there's very much cypress trees, not a whole lot of lake, more of a sloop? Do you think that would be possible?
I don't see why not. Yes, sir.
Would you ask the chairman, or the clerk of the council that he could, uh, get that for us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I believe the city engineer is here too, he can, he heard us.
He will.
But anyway, we'll get that.
Yes, we, they just stepped out, um, to get Wes, so we can get a response to, uh, Counselman Bradford's question.
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
When everybody else finishes.
Just Counselman Nicholson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we had a robust discussion about this proposed legislation during an infrastructure meeting, uh, last week. I share Counselman Bradford's global concerns about the city's water supply. He's absolutely correct that we need to be thinking about potential threats, not only from, uh, gas transmission pipelines, but also from, uh, tanker trucks that are crossing the bridge that spans Cross Lake and, and railcars. Uh, I don't know, and I'm sure Mr. Weish will tell us, but I suspect, uh, that there are some substances that could spill into the lake that would pose a threat to the safety of our citizens, uh, despite the fact that we have appropriate, uh, water treatment procedures in place. For me, this is, it, it, this is not about, uh, whether the proposed natural gas pipeline that is the subject of this legislation is the most serious threat to our water supply. The question simply is, is the benefit to the citis, citizens of the city, which would be a payment of only a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a servitude, worth any appreciable additional risk to our water supply? And, and in my view, uh, it's not. I'm still, uh, looking forward to hearing from experts on that issue, but if any credible expert expresses the view to this council, uh, that a natural gas pipeline transmitting, uh, natural gas untreated, just 48 inches beneath the surface of Cross Lake imposes a threat to the city's water supply, I think it's a very easy conclusion for the council to make that that is not worth doing. Uh, several additional concerns briefly. First, if we allow this natural gas pipeline, uh, where will we stop? Will we have a practice of allowing the bottom of Cross Lake to be crisscrossed with, uh, natural gas pipelines every time somebody asks for one? It's true that there is a transmission pipeline beneath the lake, but we were advised by the Engineering Department during our Infrastructure Committee meeting last week, that that pipeline was there before the lake was created. There's nothing we can do about that. Uh, a second concern is the fact that the entity requesting the servitude to place this pipeline is very unlikely to own it in the long term. Uh, the draft servitude agreement that was provided to the council allows that entity to freely assign or, or give away to another entity the right to use that servitude and to place a pipeline beneath our water supply. Uh, and thirdly, the servitude agreement does not limit the substances that can be transmitted through the pipeline to natural gas only. The description of the substances is broader than that. Uh, I just think it makes a lot of sense from the city's perspective to have a policy of not granting servitudes under our water supply to the extent we have the discretion not to do so. And in this case, going around the, the portion of the lake that the lake to go under is a very, uh, easy thing that will cost a few hundred thousand dollars more for the private entity establishing the gathering system. Their estimate at the Infrastructure Committee meeting was that this, uh, facility will transmit, uh, over a decade, half a billion, well, they said royalty's worth half a billion dollars, so the value of the gas is considerably more than that. Uh, we are not preventing this entity from having its gathering system by refusing the servitude. We are simply requiring them to incur a slightly, uh, additional, you know, a slight additional cost so that it doesn't go beneath the city's water supply. So, I, I look forward to hearing from the experts, but I do think this is an important issue, uh, that the councils should carefully consider. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Counselman Green?
I think the whole bridge should be shut down.
Yeah.
I, I don't have authority to do that, Counselman Green.
Just throw the whole bridge away.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Uh, tomorrow, we will ask you to postpone Resolutions 149, 152, 153, 154, and 155, uh, because we have re-advertised, uh, those resolutions. The charter requires us to advertise certain resolutions and ordinances and to place a date that the council intends to take action on, on those resolutions and ordinances. We inadvertently put the wrong date on it, and so we've re-advertised for the 19th, and we would ask you to postpone them, uh, until the 19th, and we will identify the ordinances later.
Name those again, 149, 152?
149, 152, 153, 154, and 155.
Mr. Chairman, the administration's indicated to withdraw 155, is that correct?
We're, that's a request to withdraw 155.
But that, that's just letting you know why we will be asking you to postpone.
Okay. Okay. All right. Ms. Jones, would you proceed, please?
Um, under Section C ordinance, introduction, introduction of ordinances, Ordinance 189, closing and abandoning an alley in the Coler subdivision of Town 20, Shreveport, and Section 37. Ordinance 190 is amending Chapter 78, Section 123 of the.
abandoning an alley in the Colliers subdivision of Town 20, Shreveport, and Section 37, Ordinance 190 is amending Chapter 78, Section 123 of the Code of Ordances Concerning Facility Servitude Over City-Owned Property. Okay, I can keep going?
I'm sorry. Is there new?
I don't see any requests. I can keep going. Under Section D, ordinances on second reading and final passage, Ordinance 166 is amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 167 is amending the general fund budget for 2019. Number 168 is also amending the 2019 budget funding contractual services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates. Resolution, excuse me, Ordinance 169 is amending Chapter 1, Section 1-15 of the Code of Ordenses Concerning Prosecution Fees and Traffic Cases. Ordinance 170 is repealing Division 3 of Article 3 of Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Shreveport relative to the establishment of the Clean Community Commission. Resolution 171 is amending Chapter 1, Section 1-14 regarding general penalties for unlawful acts, unlawful offenses, and misdemeanors. Ordinance 172 is amending the 2019 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 173 is amending the 2019 airport enterprise fund budget. Ordinance 174 is amending the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 175 is amending the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 176 is amending the 2019 grant special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 177 is amending the 2019 community development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 178 is amending the 2019 downtown entertainment economic development area special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 179 is amending the 2019 riverfront development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 186 is amending and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana relative to utilities. Ordinance 187 is an ordinance to amend various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance 188 is amending the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code for rezoning property located on the northwest side of Pickett Street, approximately 170 feet southeast of Fairfield Avenue, Shreveport, Catupires, Louisiana, from our UC Urban Core Residential District to C3 General Commercial District.
All right. Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, several of the ordinances, Ms. Jones has read for us by title, concern amendment of the 2019 budget. I want to call to the full council's attention the fact that on December 3rd, the internal auditor provided at my request a list of approximately $1.4 million of expenditures that exceed budgeted amounts by the council. And I mean, not just budgeted amounts initially, but budgeted amounts with amendment. One of the core functions of the council is to appropriate funds, and if for any reason those appropriations are exceeded without authorization, that is a very, very serious problem. In fact, the charter provides that a finance director who authorizes expenditures in excess of appropriations is personally liable for the expenditures. It further provides that any employee who makes expenditures in excess of appropriations without the finance director's consent is, that that is grounds for termination. I had discussions with Ms. Jones, our chief administrative officer. I know that she is working feverishly to address this issue, but I do want to note my very serious concern that that happened, and my expectation that whatever accounting system changes need to be made to ensure that spending in excess of appropriations cannot be posted is immediately made. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
What are, and I'm going to ask Ms. Krill this, I think, legally, if we go over a certain amount, I thought that if, let's say that, I don't know, I'm just going to try to pull something, let's say that the mayor's budget goes over by 10%, at that point, that's supposed to trigger us to reallocate those funds or make budget amendments. Is that, is that correct? Is there, is there a number, like a percentage? I don't think that every time we go over, we need to be going and doing an amendment. Isn't there a number, if I recall?
I am not certain. I would have to look that up.
I think we're talking about two different things. One, the charter says you will not go over. I think state law says if you go over more than 10%-
10%, is what I thought.
Of the-
5%? Okay.
Of the fund, of the total fund, then you have to do an amendment. But we are talking about character level here.
That's correct.
But, you know, some of these numbers, and I don't know, did everybody in the council get, or just all in the finance committee get this email?
I believe only the committee has seen this.
I mean, we've got some, very small numbers, and I'm not going to call it departments, but we've got some very small numbers, like $2,000 or $3,000, but it equated to 800 and some odd percent above the budgeted amount. So those are, those are concerning to me. If it were 10% here, or 5% here, or something like, but this has obviously been going on for quite some time, and we have not amended our budget. I just want to see what kind of, and I think Councilman Nicholson has talked about some safeguards with software and things like that, that would be generated to where it brings it to the council, where we can amend our budget. Because we sure want to make sure that we're complying with whatever charter law is and state law. We don't want to be in noncompliance. And I understand, I mean, you know, when I was a fire chief, we might have something that might go over budget, have to go put a new pump in a truck, and we would have to amend that budget. I just want to make sure that we have some policies in place that, with the administration that brings it to the council before we get to an 800% over budget. And that was a very small number, so it's easy to get to 800%, but it just, it just looks bad.
If I can respond, we did receive a copy of that report, and we are looking at our security override provisions and making sure that the finance director and the controller are the only two employees who are able to make those adjustments. However, our local requirement is that whatever the council appropriates at the, at the character series level, that the budgets do not exceed that amount by any percentage. And so this current ordinance amendments are to correct the 2019 budgets to reallocate funds to come within that amount. But in the future, what should have happened is that those budget amendments aren't supposed to come to council in advance before that occurs. Or if there is an emergency or something that needs to be, you know, happen in advance, the council is notified, and a budget amendment is then forthcoming to be able to make that change legislatively.
So as long as we're working to get it corrected, I mean, I'm good.
Yes, and, and IT, we're working with IT and finance to make sure that that is done by the end of the year, pulling the reports, making sure that we're accounting for all employees that have access to the accounting system, and making sure that there are only those two employees, the finance director and the controller, have the ability to make that override.
So, right now, it could be done by other employees, I would assume.
That's what we're determining, yes, we're trying to determine which employees have that capability.
Well, I would think that-
And then with that also, we'll have to revise our internal controls and procedures with accountants. So all of that, that's happened at all levels.
Well, I appreciate our internal auditor bringing this to our attention. I don't necessarily think that this started in the administration, this started in finance, and I just want to make sure we get this safe play, and I appreciate y'all digging into it immediately, because I think immediately when we realize this, y'all, you've been working with Councilman Nicholson to try to get this corrected, so-
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
I have Councilman Bradford, but you did say the finance director and the controller, right?
Yes, that should be the only two employees.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Bradford.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Nicholson, tell me again, the amount that you referenced.
Councilman Bradford, the amount as of November 30th of this year, there are three amounts, and I hesitated to do the math in my head and get it wrong, but it's between $1.4 and $1.5 million. It looks to me, based on comparing that number to an earlier number that was pulled on November 12th, that the amount but for the budget amendments would, would have hit about $2 million, which is a significant amount of money, of course, for our budget.
So, and I haven't been privy to some of, some of these overages in budget. So where did the money come from to make up for the overage?
I don't really answer that question, Kelly.
Do you know, internal auditor, do you have an idea where the money to make up for the overages, the $1.4, $1.5 million? Do you know where the money came from to ensure that those expenditures was paid?
I'm not sure how many of the finances, I know it's just in a general cash operating account that those payments are made.
Okay. So, CEO, is there any, any procedures or policies that, that would trigger when an account became within a percentage of overage?
Yeah, and what I have learned is that our new accounting system does not provide that trigger, but it should. And that's why we're wanting to work with IT to find out what employees have that ability and to basically revoke those, the ability for them to be able to override. The council appropriates the budget within what's called a character series, and those appropriations are not supposed to go over without a budget amendment coming to the council. So what's on the agenda right now are budget amendments to make those reallocations from other appropriate sub-object series that were under budget, so that we're not exceeding the total budget, but we're within the council's appropriations for each of those sub-object, those character series.
I understand, but we had budget hearings with an impression of what our financial ability was, and this wasn't included in the, in the, in the fact that we, we was trying to deal with some real serious budgetary issues, and now we, we face the, amend some things that would even further lessen what we have. I don't know. You know-
And we haven't gone over, over budget with what has happened with the-
No, categorically, categorically, we went over budget.
Exactly.
Yeah, categorically, but I'm saying, if we, if we're going to categorize our budget, then we did it for a reason, just like we're getting ready to amend, to make the adjustments for this year, next year's budget. So we're anticipating a certain obligation financially, and if we are wrong in that, we need to, we need to be made aware of that and then make the proper modifications. But I'm saying, we can't operate like this. I don't know. See, we, we got to, we, people watching us, they, I mean, there's a series of issues that, that we're watching, that they, they, they will, you know, not handling city business properly. We have to do better than this. We better than this. We can do better than this. And I'm hoping that we can live up to the confidence that the citizens have put in us. Measures has to be in place. We cannot, at the last minute, find that we are in this, in this posture, in this condition. So hopefully, with Mr. Chairman, we can, we can work through this, and as we move into the next category of our agenda today, we, we're going to be looking at some very serious budgetary issues and amendments that will, or will not reflect what we should do. I said earlier that we have to live within our means, and our means are what they are. We can't, we can't spend money twice, and we have to do what we can do. And I hope, I'm hopeful that we can reason together as we move forward to, to do what we think is priority and what's right. Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilman Nicholson. Mr. Bradford, did you and your wife go to the car lot? Did you look at, get a new car yet?
It's not in our means.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the administration's commitment to addressing this issue, but I do want to note that the failure of the finance department, in particular the finance director, to implement appropriate controls to prevent the unlawful expenditure of more than $1.4 million is a very serious and fundamental failure on the part of that department and that director. Councilman Bradford and Chairman Bowman, you both work for very large and reputable organizations in our community, and if a department head in one of your organizations were to come to the board of directors and say, oh, I spent more than $1 million without authorization of the board, that person would be out the door. We have to demand more from the people responsible for safeguarding the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Flurry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bradford, Councilman Bradford, that $1.4 million wouldn't help me out there, it'll probably have to come from reserves to take care of that, or will that come out of street revenue or?
Well, it's got to be paid. General expenses.
Sir?
My understanding is there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a catch on, and they keep, they keep pulling from that until, you know, until, to make sure that the bills are paid.
So, if we got some accounts that hadn't spent everything, will come out of those accounts, is that what, plug and plug them in, or is that what they're saying?
There's budget amendments that's on the agenda now that accounts for the reallocation of funds that we'll cover. So we're not over budget, but we have to reallocate to make sure that we're within the appropriations that the council has approved.
I got it. Just make sure you get it, Councilman, not Jay Flurry.
But you're saying that we are reacting, you're acting, how can we be proactive? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And this administration agrees that the character series over appropriation should not have happened. And that's why we're working with the finance department and with IT to make sure that it does not happen again in the future. That is something that I'm confident that we can have implemented over the next couple of weeks. That way, going forward, you know, we have 2020 budgets that are on the agenda that, and you all also receive a report from the finance department each month, and we'll make sure that those are not exceeding appropriations in the future. And if something happens and that there is an emergency, that you all will be notified and given the opportunity in advance to respond before that happens. But still, in every case in advance, we have to come to the council with a budget amendment to make sure that we're not exceeding those appropriations.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Councilman Green.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with all this going on, with what I just heard, and $1.4 million, when you gave your budget and it was balanced, I was very happy. And since hearing what we just heard, and our auditor and all of that, as I look at all of the amendments that has now been attached to the budget, then I look at the budget as being hijacked. And so therefore, my recommendation to you would be, until we get our audit report and our city balance, that all of these amendments that's on here, of course, they could have been addressed with the bond issue, but all of these amendments that's on here, if we don't defeat them, I would urge you to veto them until we get our house in order. And then once we get our house in order sometime, maybe in the summer or in the spring, then we can come back with some of these amendments. But I would ask that, and if they pass, since you have the ink pen to approve what happens, then if I were in your seat, I wouldn't approve them until Jesus come. So, that's my recommendation. If we are concerned about the audit, if we are concerned about getting our city balanced, then how can we, on one end, say we got a problem over here with $1.4 million, but then when we get the amendments, then we got everything on here to amend except the kitchen sink? And I think that's wrong. If we're going to be prudent on one side, we ought to be prudent on the other side. If we're prudent about getting this straight, then let us agree to get it straight. Let's get, agree to get it fixed. All these amendments that I see, if you had had this on the agenda and your budget was unbalanced, this council would be in an uproar. So I would advise you that on tomorrow, if they don't all fail, that you would use your veto power and veto all of them until we can get a complete balance from our audit department. And I would be in hopes that the audit committee would support me on that, that we'll get our house in order before we start amending to buying anything or doing anything else. And that's, that would, if I was in your seat, I'm not in your seat, I know my job and I know where my lines stop at. I'm here to vote for or against legislation. Council's job is to meet on Saturday and fourth, Mondays and Tuesdays. and Friday, Mondays and Tuesdays, to accept or to reject. The administration got a whole nother area, and I don't cross that line. And so that would be my recommendation to you. I was proud that you had a balanced budget, and I'm still proud. But then, when I see all of these amendments, and then when I hear all of these reports, and then when I hear before, "We didn't want to spend 98 cents," now, we got amendments, I couldn't, I can't, I didn't go to class to count in my head, so I hadn't had a chance to count all this stuff up, but these amendments are unbelievable. So I would ask you, as mayor of this city, that until we get our audit, get all of this stuff straightened out, that we don't put any more debt, that we don't do that. And I just, that's just where I stand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Green.
And by the way, every amendment, I'm going to vote against every amendment, except for those that you have as what you were describing, the administration. Other than that, I will be voting against all of these amendments because I have a job to do. And I'm going to do my job to the best of my ability, so that when I go home at night, I can go to sleep and sleep well. I have enough, I've lost enough of my hair worried about the church bills, and so I can't be worried about these council bills. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Green. Vice Chair Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, to the extent Councilman Green is suggesting that we should be as fiscally responsible as we can, I agree with him. I do want to make sure that I understand the rules of the road over the next day or two. My understanding is that the administration has no veto over individual amendments. That's not how this process works. And my further understanding is that while the mayor has a line item veto that in the past has not often been exercised, he does not have the ability to veto the budget as a whole. Am I correct, Ms. Creel?
I would have to look that up, Councilman. I can't give you that answer.
Mr. Clerk.
I thought you was directing to me. The clerk don't know what's in my head.
No, sir, I'm asking him for the rules that govern the process. I understood what you said.
No, let me explain what I said. This is what I'm saying. We got a $1.4 over.
Mr. Chairman, I have the floor, and I have asked.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. I figured this would press a button.
When a member of the council says he's going to vote against every amendment...
Every one of...
Regardless of substance of...
Hold on, hold on.
I have the floor.
Hold on, let me explain this to you. You don't control this seat. You control that one right there. That's the one you control. Get that understanding. You control right down there, not up here. And because of my amendment rights, I have the right to speak what I'm going to do.
When you have the floor.
I'm sorry. You know, I have to say, it's disappointing for a member to say that he will not consider the substance of amendments proposed by any colleague and that he will vote against everyone. That's all I care to say about that, and when you have the floor, you can make whatever response you please. I want to understand, if the clerk can tell me, whether the mayor has the ability to veto the entire budget. I don't think he does, but if I'm mistaken, I would like to be corrected. And if that question can't be answered right now, that's...
Well, I can tell you what I know.
Yes, sir.
If an amendment is adopted, then, and the budget is adopted as amended, I think that's the budget. The mayor has a line item veto, but once when we tried to figure out how this exercised, we had difficulty doing it. And that's, that's all I can tell you this.
Well, I appreciate that, so I don't want there to be any confusion among the members of the council. Four votes pass the budget. We don't need five, because there is no veto to be overridden as it concerns the entire budget. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I might have to excuse myself after I make these comments. One of my closest friends passed away, and I'm assisting almost entirely to his preparation, funeral, homegoing preparations, and I need to excuse myself to meet with some people. But let me just say this. The sensitivity of the budget is important. The mayor presented an executive budget for this council. At this point, and including tomorrow, that budget transferred to the ownership of the council. And that's why you hear people say the council carried the purse strings, because now the budget, we assume responsibility of the budget and make the modifications that we think is necessary. I haven't reviewed all the amendments. I guess I've been preoccupied. But the responsibility of making sure that we pass a budget that is responsive to the needs of this city is what it's about. It's not personal. It's about, it's about carrying out the needs of this city. And that's what we're going to do tomorrow. It's the council's budget after today, after tomorrow, after whatever we do. So I'm going to study these tonight, and I'm going to do what I think is in the interest of the city. We all should look at what's in the interest of the city. And we're a democracy, like I said, and we'll carry ourselves in that order, in a professional and prudent order, to pass a budget that is reflective of the needs of this city. I agree with Councilman Green. I was disappointed with the bond issue. I thought a lot of the needs of the city would have been addressed there. But now, we have to do what we can afford. I keep using that term, in our means and our ability to do what we do, considering the trend of the city, considering the trend of the city. I think we can be together reasonably in agreement that we are not too far off, even though we have different life experiences. We come from different districts. But I think we can reason for what is the priorities and the needs of the city, and I'm going to do that. And I trust that you'll do it as well. So, Mr. Chairman, please excuse me, and I'm a bit disadvantaged, because I know a lot of the conversation about the amendments would happen, but I'll catch up, and I'll be prepared to act tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
We're going to speak on that, and tell your condolences to your friend. I know that was like a family matter to you, so we do understand, and take care of what you need. Take care.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I'll relay that to the descendants, to Mrs. Simmons. Thank you very much.
I got Councilman Green.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, since Councilman Nichols called me out, Councilman Nicholson, I did not attack you when you didn't support the bond issue, that many of these things should have, would have been addressed in the bond issue. In fact, you didn't even vote to give the people an opportunity. And I dare you get upset with me because I have my right to speak on whatever I want to speak on. I never said to you, "You can't speak on this, and you can't talk about this." I mean, I take offense to that. The same thing that it took to get you up here, I went out and got voted in to be up here. So I have one voice up here, and my voice will be heard. And again, I say to the mayor that you gave us a balanced budget. We have a problem over here with audit. We have a problem, some problems that we have that was here when we got here, and we have not got them resolved. And so therefore, my recommendation would be, before we go piling on amendments, that we would be able to bring to this body from the administration and this entire body, that we have a clear bill, then and only then should we start amending and spending more money. Now, that's my request. Now, however you feel about that, that's not in your seat. Don't ever cross the line and come to District Cal, because that's my seat. And I won't ever cross lines down in your seat. So however that made you excited or whatever, just know, your seat is there. This is my seat here, and I have the right, as any other council member up here, to speak what's on my heart, or speak what's right for this city. So I appreciate, I will never cross the line with you, and please don't think that I'm a boy that you can cross the line with me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. CAO Jones.
Yes. If and when the time is appropriate, Wes White is here to speak on Resolution 155 regarding a question that Councilman Bradford had.
Okay.
If it's okay for him to come up.
And that's, if the, I saw a couple of people on the front row, and I was wondering if they were going to have the ability to come up and speak. But I didn't receive any requests to speak for them, so that's why we did not call up. I didn't know.
Councilman Butcher.
Back to the budget, real quick. I'm sorry. I hate to interrupt you, but when I look through some of these amendments, and there are very few that I've sponsored or been part of, I'm not quite sure that it's spending additional funds that we don't have. It looks more like, to me, reallocation of some funds, and maybe some decreasing of some spending that might help us to go have a little bit more of a robust surplus. I think that the projection was that with the Clean City Fee that was passed, that there was going to be, and I didn't vote for it, so I don't need to be reminded that I didn't vote for the Clean City Fee, but I didn't, that there was going to be a little bit more of a robust reserve. Well, I think we ended up with projected $1.
$1.2.
$1.2. I think that some of us on the council thought that we would be somewhere hovering around $3 million, a little bit above that, at the end of this fiscal year. I personally see it as our job, for the record, as council members, to work with the mayor to make sure his budget is balanced. I've always said that sometimes four eyes are better than just two. And this is in no way an insult to anybody, I don't think, because I don't see really any, there may be a couple on here that require a little bit of additional spending, but like, one of the amendments is taking some money out of a fund that has been used for years and years, and probably is going to be used to make these budget amendments to 2019. Councilman Nicholson's asking to put that into a reserve fund to get what we felt like, and what the mayor felt like was a comfortable number with our reserve. So if we can move some things around and work together as a council. But I don't think, you know, I'm not going to vote for every one of them, Councilman Green. I can tell you that. But there are a few that I feel like that justify us voting for and maybe pulling our belt in just a little bit. But we do have issues. But I hate for us to sit up in a public body and argue with each other over what I really don't see as increased spending by the city with any of these amendments. I believe that it's just kind of reallocating some things and moving them around. And that's my take. And, you know, I welcome input from pretty much anybody, but I feel like sometimes there's not, there's not an open line of communications between all of us. There's a few people talking to a few people, and a few people talking to anybody. And my phone, my phone is always open to anybody to call me, you know. There's been instances where I might not talk to the chairman for a month, but whenever there's something that we really need to discuss, I'll pick up the phone and call him, and he always answers the phone. And I don't think there's ever been a time that Mayor Perkins, even though we disagree, or the chairman, we disagree on things, that I'm not answered that phone and had a conversation about how we can get Shreveport to a better spot. So I just want us to keep in mind, we all did go through the same election process. And actually, it was yesterday, by the way, that we all were elected by the citizens of Shreveport to sit in these seats. And I feel like that we have to keep an open mind and work together, because I've said it's over and over again, as I've sat here and disagreed with pretty much everybody sitting here, including who most people would consider to be my allies on this council. I have disagreed. In fact, I disagreed today was one of them. But the ultimate goal is, we've got to get from point A to point B. We've got to. Our future in Shreveport depends on us being able to work together, talk to each other, and amend things, look at it, and just go from there. So I just, I want to start this next year off with an open line of communications to everybody that sits here and to the administration, and let's start working at making Shreveport better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have Councilman Fuller, and then Councilman Green, and then we'll pull CAO person back up.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to say, if I get glasses, I can have more of a say-so on the budget, because you said four eyes was better than two.
Thank you.
I don't think that's fair to me and to Councilman Bowman.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Councilman Green.
Councilman, were you, and you referenced me, were you talking to me?
No, sir. I was talking to all of us as a body.
Okay.
Oh, I do have another thing.
And the mayor.
I would say, I want everyone to know, but you in particular, now, Mr. Green, that my amendments weren't meant as a slight to anybody.
No.
It's not personal. But I just want you to know that, like, the proposals I've put forward were just things where I saw we might be able to make these little adjustments. If they pass, cool. If they don't, I'm not going to, like, my feelings won't be hurt about it. But I did have a couple of these things. Now, though, I haven't, like, reached out to people to explain my rationale on any of them, but that's all I want to say, is that it wasn't, it's not meant as an indictment of the administration. Part of our job is being responsible for the budget, is to bring these ideas to the table to see if it might help us put money to the reserve, or be able to spend some money other places. After we sat through that big red binder and looked at everything together, some of the different departments come back to you and say, "We really have these needs. Is there anything we can do to try to stretch this here, or stretch that there?" And that's kind of what some of these amendments, I think, we're trying to do. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Green.
And so again, so that I can make myself perfectly clear, I'm not against any of this. All of it is good. My request, again, was simply, let's get our house in order, and then we go forward. Just, I understand, I saw the amendments. It's rearranging money and putting some over here and taking some over there. I did see that. But I said, before we do any of that, let's just get our house in order, and then we communicate with one another as to bringing the ideas forward, as to not taking it in a corner, because all these amendments, none of them have I been contacted by anybody as to what I thought or whatever.
Yes, sir.
And so therefore, my only suggestion was, is that we would wait until we got our house in order, and then we would go forward. And I've never said this publicly, but I would like to thank Councilman Flurry. Councilman Flurry, when you voted for that bond issue, man, I know you got talked about. I know whatever went down. But I commend you, man, to want to stand up for the people in your district and your city. And I appreciate you. And I know that even in here, you still have a heart to do some of the things that you wanted to do. And I'm with you. I'm with the whole council. My only request is, let's get our house in order and then go forward. I mean, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying throw the whole baby out. I'm just saying, let us get all of our audit and everything in line, and then go forward. That's my request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next section is 2020 budget ordinances.
Did you want them to come up and speak now, or?
Yes. Is that, is it okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. This is Wes White. He is our engineer under Environmental Services. There was a question that Councilman Bradford had regarding the city's contingency plan for any hazards, events that happen along the lake, and I just wanted to speak to that.
Wes White, engineering, and I'm probably the only non-engineer in the engineering department, but my area of responsibility is the Environmental Services section of the department. And we oversee a number of different issues, one of which is cross lake. We have a cross-lake watershed program, and the goal of that program is to protect the lake. So we have a staff. We have a three-person. We wish we... So, uh, we have a staff, we have a three-person, uh, we wish we had four, we have three-person staff that, that's their job, is to inspect the watershed, pull samples, uh, monitor activities that are going on in the watershed that have, have the potential of, of affecting the lake. So, and one, one thing I would like to say, a point that I made the other day, would like again to make is with a surface water body, you cannot not have issues. You're going to have issues that they may be, in all, in most cases, they're going to be minor. They're not going to be anything that's going to be a concern from a drinking water standpoint. What we try to do is to, to guard against, monitor for major problems. And that's what our guys do. And, and one thing that we have and the city should be, should be happy about and thankful for is we actually have a watershed management program. Most communities that depend on surface water for drinking do not have this. And we're, we're, there's several circumstances that, that are in our favor that allow this to happen. One is the location of, of the watershed. It's in an area that, that, um, is not substantially impacted by most of the stormwater drainage in the city. Another is the city actually has authority that was granted to it by the state legislature to enforce water quality issues in the watershed beyond the city limits. It's not something that you would expect to see. And, uh, sometimes we, we have raised eyebrows when our trucks roll up at somebody's house that's 10 miles outside the city limits because we have a concern about what may be going on out there. We actually have the authority to take action. And that's not something, I, I, I hear it all the time from other cities that depend on surface water for drinking. They don't have that ability. So that's what we do. We, we try to, to prevent there from being issues in, in, in the lake. I'm not sure if I'm addressing the specific question, but that, that's what our watershed management program tries to do.
I wish, I wish Mr. Bradford was still here and maybe we need to, maybe we need to bring this up whenever he gets back. Or maybe we need to, maybe come up with a list of questions and maybe address it on the 19th one. Uh, one, one thing I wanted to, and I'm trying to recall something. I think that, you know, we're talking about our water supply. We have several tributaries that go into the, into Cross Lake.
Right.
That's correct. And wasn't there a leak somewhere up, golly, in Moringsport or something like that? That was an oil leak that was threatening Cross Lake at some point? They had to put up dikes and all that?
If it were around.
Maybe about two or three years ago?
Uh, yeah, we had once, uh, not around Moringsport, but further, I guess, south of there, toward the west. Our guys, our, our watershed staff actually came across an area where there, where an oil pipeline had ruptured and they were able to, they found it. We didn't know about it but for the fact that our guys found it. And, um, made sure that cleanup took place, made sure that there was no off-site issues that resulted from it. So it does happen.
I'm, I'm extremely concerned about, about anything that could pollute our water system. I mean, our drinking water is, but I think a lot of people lose sight that, that Bossier City gets their water from the Red River, which has many more tributaries flowing into it. So I guess that in relation to the application for the pipeline, I just wanna make sure that we do our due diligence and make sure that, uh, because it is gonna be untreated from what I understand, and I'll ask that question to them, that it will be, it's more of a gathering line, not a distribution line. And, and I think that from what I'm hearing and from what I've seen in the past, even there was a question asked by Councilman Bradford about the Cross Lake Bridge, I remember when they constructed it, it was built kind of at an angle and there's like these reservoirs that.
Right.
Run underneath it and they go into holding ponds on the east and west side. I mean, that's, that's all checked regularly by the city, I would say.
It's checked, yeah. Of course, the bridge is D O T D, but, but in fact, we have been in touch with D O T D over the past few months. We try to, to stay in touch with them yearly to make sure they're inspecting that system. And they just completed an inspection and I understand whatever issues they found, within the next week or two, they're supposed to, to address.
But there is a fail safe in place if an 18-wheeler tanker truck.
Correct.
Carrying some hazardous material were spilled. The, the second issue that's been raised is the train, which I think is a little bit more concerning even than the pipeline. Are there any federal grants out there that could move that train track? Have we looked into that?
We have looked into it. We have not had any luck with that. Uh, most of the rail yard actually is outside of the watershed, even though it's near the lake. Most of the switching, most of the, the, you know, active part of the process is actually downstream of the lake. A small portion of that yard does drain to the, to the lake.
My, my concern is it going right over the dam. I mean, that, I mean, if we could take that small section, which I would assume is 10,000 feet, some, something like that, and maybe reroute it, that would be something that I think that maybe the administration should maybe look at and talk to the federal government about getting that away from our water, our water source if, if it could happen. You don't think that can happen?
Listen, you're, you're going, these people have, KCS Railroad is one of the premier railroads in the United States. They run almost all into Canada, Mexico. They have a good track record. You, you're making something that is not.
But there was, there was a concern brought up by another council member and I.
I know.
I.
Do you know what his question was? Y'all chased these rabbits all afternoon. You know what his question was? What is the protocol if the 18-wheeler flips over the rail, not spill, but goes over the rail into the lake? That's what Councilman Bradford wants to know. What is the protocol? And 911 is called. Wolverton, he gets out there, then he gets a hold of the, uh, environmental people. You've been a fireman, you know there's a protocol. That's what Councilman Bradford wanted to know. What is the protocol? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Butcher?
Um, having said that, I think we got everything we need.
Thank you.
We said you're all chasing these rabbits.
Yeah.
Y'all chase rabbits on your own time.
What else can be said after that?
Mr. Clark, we have Mr. Pratt and some other representatives of that entity. Uh, what is the proper procedure for allowing them to speak now? A motion to suspend the rules or can we invite them?
So, all right.
Second.
Was that even necessary?
I'm not sure, but I wanna do things right, Councilman Fuller. So there's been a motion to suspend the rules, properly seconded. Please vote. Flurry, you sent some of them flat rabbits over to this town. The motion carries with five, two out of chamber. Mr. Pratt, would you like to speak, please, sir?
All right, thank you, um, Mr. Acken, Chairman and, uh, councilmen and women in the mayor's office. Uh, last week, we did meet with the Infrastructure Committee. Uh, I forgot to say, Paul Pratt, 935 E7. Uh, today I have my client here, Pine Wave Energy Partners from Fort Worth, Texas. I did tell them, uh, early this year that Shreveport was open for business. And they talked to me about their grand ideal of oil and gas exploration in our city. Uh, not only are we seeking a servitude right-of-way agreement with the city of Shreveport, we do have other things that we're requesting. Uh, purchase of water, for example, which would lead to about a million dollars in revenue for the city of Shreveport. Um, but last week, we did request a meeting so that we can talk about this, where, uh, we can ease some of those concerns regarding safety around our public drinking water. Pipeline safety is probably one of the safest means for transporting natural gas in America right now. Uh, we're not talking about oil, we're talking about natural gas. Uh, I do have, um, Neil Hamilton here, who represents Pine Wave Energy Partners, uh, who would like to come up and say something about their safety record and them wanting to come into the Shreveport community and be a, a great corporate citizen, not just to transfer, uh, transport, uh, oil and gas or natural gas here, but to be embedded in this community by, uh, helping us to grow. In addition to that, uh, we have Mr. Jamie Burns, who represents the Department of Natural Resources. I know last week there was some, um, debate about who are actually the experts about oil and gas development. They're the ones that regulate pipeline development as well as drilling. And so we invited him here today to talk about the safety record of, um, of natural gas development as well as, um, uh, pipelines. So I'm gonna ask Neil to come up first and then we'll hear from Jamie Burns. We just wanted to go on the record, I know this is still language that we're talking about, uh, putting this together. We just want, uh, the city to be open. Um, let's discuss, let's make this work. And if we can't make it work, uh, we'll find other means to make it work somewhere else. Uh, but I just want you guys to be open. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. As Paul mentioned, my name is Neil Hamilton. I'm the land manager and representative for Pine Wave Energy Partners and Cross Lake Gathering. Um, I really wanted to just introduce myself and let you guys and, and girls know that, um, all of your concerns were heard, uh, last week from, at the, uh, at the Infrastructure Committee meeting. And Councilman Nicholson, I wanted to further, uh, address some of the things that you, uh, mentioned earlier as, in regards to the agreement, um, 48-inch depth, um, and the, the product that is gonna be running through the line. Um, and there was, there was a third, um, request from the engineering group as far as, um, that we, there be no disturbance of the surface of the land. All of those have been addressed. Um, 48 inches is the minimum depth that we've been told, uh, will be required, but that's surely not only what we will adhere to. We plan on being, get a bit deeper than that. We're all working with engineering to come to an agreement as to where that might be. Um, so, and also, uh, from a product standpoint, we, in our revised agreement, we, that we submitted to engineering, we are working to hone in on what the exact products will be that are running through that line. So all of the specifics that have been addressed by engineering have been resubmitted to Mr. Patrick Furlong in the engineering group, and we're working through that diligently. And we, again, um, we wanna do business with you guys and we're trying to partner with, with every person and resource that we can to get your questions answered and your needs met. And, and I think most importantly, we start with Department of Natural Resources and, and Jamie Burns, who's with the Pipeline Division, and can maybe answer any of your questions that you may have.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jamie Burns. I'm with the Department of Natural Resources. I'm a Conservation Program Manager. I've been with the department since 2011 and I oversee, uh, the inspection of natural gas and hazardous liquid pipelines for Northwest Louisiana. At this time, if you have any questions related to, uh, the industry.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Burns, thank you for being here today. If you would, please, what is, you've told us your position. Are you an engineer?
I am not an engineer. I, I'm an inspector.
Okay.
Uh, I graduated from Northwestern State University, uh, bachelor's degree, concentration in Unified Public Safety Administration and Social Science. And I've been with the department since 2011 doing inspections.
Uh, how many, uh, lakes which are primary water supplies have natural gas pipelines running under in the Northwest Louisiana?
That's a very good question. Uh, I will be happy to go back and speak with the office so we can give you the correct amount, uh, that, that do have those pipelines running under.
Okay, I, I understand from our Infrastructure Committee meeting that there, there is a transmission pipeline that was there before Cross Lake was built. Are you aware of any other, well, let me ask it this way so you'll be sure to know the answer. Have you inspected any pipelines or acquired knowledge of any pipelines beneath Cross Lake since you joined the department in 2011?
No, I have not.
Are you familiar with the sort of the status of construction of this gathering system that this company is, is building generally?
No, uh, what happens in our process is, uh, what we do is we oversee construction for regulated pipelines, whether it be transmission, gathering, distribution. Uh, when, when they are going to be regulated at that point, that, that is when we take over in that process. As of right now, uh, the pipeline in question is not regulated, so we, we don't have any part of that process.
Not regulated because it's not yet, uh, ready to gather.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, you've inspected these pipelines since 2011. Do natural gas pipelines sometimes rupture or leak?
They do.
Okay, that, that happens?
Yes, sir.
All right, is it, is it possible that a natural gas pipeline placed under Cross Lake might at some point in the future rupture or leak?
That's an absolute possibility.
This may not be a question for you, but I'll, but I'll ask it, but if you're here to, to provide support to the company or to answer our questions, uh, why should we not require this company simply to go around the lake? I mean, why, why should the city grant a servitude for $150,000 for a pipeline that might leak at some point in the future?
Well, for our department, we, we don't promote, uh, the construction of pipelines. We simply promote the safety of transportation. So if you do enter into a partnership and we regulate it, what we do is, is we make sure that, uh, that all of the applicable codes in 192 are upheld, uh, for that gathering system.
And I, and I appreciate that clarification. I'll restate it just so that it's clear for the record and, and the public. You're not here to advocate for the construction of this pipeline.
I am not.
The department takes no position on whether this pipeline should or should not be placed under Cross Lake?
No, sir. We, we are, uh, we've been asked that if, if you do engage in a partnership, uh, that as a regulatory authority, uh, that, that we do become a part of the process of the construction and for, uh, all the monitoring and regulatory compliance.
Okay, but those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. All right. Anyone else? Councilman Fuller?
Um, no, just a statement that we will be going back into another Infrastructure Committee meeting where we can further discuss all of this. But I think it might be helpful if we send you questions ahead of time so y'all can actually be prepared.
Absolutely. At, at any time, if anybody has any questions.
We might have actually suggested that so that you might have answers for us.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, well, I, I would like Mr. Chairman to address the question of the gentleman from, uh, Fort Worth. I mean, you're from Fort Worth? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
State your name again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
State your name again.
Neil Hamilton.
Uh, Mr. Hamilton, I just wanna, look, I wanna thank you for being here and reiterate what I said in the Infrastructure Committee meeting, which is I am in no way opposed to oil and gas development in the state. Uh, oil and gas is a critically important part of our economy. That's not why I raised the concerns that I did. Uh, I'm just trying to understand from the city's perspective, uh, why we shouldn't, uh, politely decline the request for a servitude under the lake and suggest that you just go around it. I know there's some additional costs. Uh, one of your representatives at the Infrastructure Committee meeting said those costs would be in the range of $650,000. That's a lot of money by any measure, but if you're talking about a gathering system that is gonna move billions of dollars of gas over its lifetime, it, it's, it's not an insurmountable sum by any means. I assume that this gathering system is already largely constructed. Is that true?
Uh, a portion of it.
Okay.
This is our last leg of, of right-of-way.
Okay, so, so you've acquired right-of-way for everything except this?
That's correct.
And so just in candor, if, if we decline a servitude, uh, you're not gonna not build your gathering system, you're just gonna incur additional costs to take another route. I mean, isn't that true?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Jones, you wanna continue?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to continue?
Yes, sir, I will. Um, the next section is 2020 budget ordinances. Um, ordinance 140 is adopting the 2020 Capital Projects Fund budget. 141 adopts the 2020 Overfront Development Fund budget. Ordinance 142 adopts the 2020 General Fund budget. 143 adopts the 2020 Retained Risk Fund budget. 144 adopts the 2020 Metropolitan Planning Commission Fund budget. 145 adopts the 2020 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. 146 adopts the 2020 Grant Special Revenue Fund budget. 147 adopts the 2020 Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 148 adopts the 2020 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund budget. 149 adopts the 2020 Golf Enterprise Fund budget. Ordinance 150 adopts the 2020 Airport Enterprise Fund budget. 151 adopts the 2020 Water and Sewerage Fund budget. 151 adopts the budget-funding contractual services provided to Sfortran by Metro Management Associates, Inc. 153 adopts the Downtown Parking Enterprise budget. 154 adopts the 2020 Convention Center Enterprise Fund budget. 155 adopts the 2020 Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund budget. 156 adopts the 2020 Debt Service Fund budget. 157 adopts the 2020 Solid Waste Enterprise Fund budget. 158 adopts the 2020 Street Special Revenue Fund budget. 159 adopts the 2020 Downtown Development Authority budget.
Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly discuss two amendments that I propose that would move money from the Street Special Revenue Fund to the General Fund. The first concerns the General Fund operating reserve. The council and the public will recall that in connection with discussions about the need for a sanitation fee, which I did support earlier this year, we all agreed that the General Fund Reserve that was budgeted for 2019, which was in the range of $3 million, was too low, was not a responsible number for revenue in excess of $200 million. The CIO agreed to that proposition, the mayor certainly did, and he spoke quite well, I thought, about the importance of fiscal responsibility and ensuring that we do not spend beyond our means. The mayor inherited a budget and a system that had substantial challenges, and so I do not fault him when I note that the proposed 2020 budget provided for a General Fund Reserve of only $1 million. That is just not enough, in my view, for, to responsibly safeguard the city and its fiscal stability. And so, one proposal that I've made by amendment is not to spend additional money, but to transfer $3 million from the Street Special Revenue Fund to the General Fund and then allocate that $3 million to the reserve. That would bring the reserve from a little more than $1 million to slightly more than $4 million. $4 million is still inadequate, but it is movement in the right direction. And I really think we need to treat the 2019 reserve as the number below which we will not go. Okay? $3 million is too low. It has to move in the other direction, even if that requires some sacrifice. We can approve this amendment, and if there is some unforeseen event during 2020, we can allocate funds from the reserves. But our starting point needs to be a General Fund Reserve that is more than, not less than, the 2019 reserve that was budgeted. A second amendment of some consequence, which I'll call to the council's attention and which I proposed, is an amendment to move $1 million, an additional $1 million from the Street Special Revenue Fund to SPAR for building maintenance. We have discussed all year the fact that the city has chronically neglected its infrastructure, including the buildings that it owns. Everybody on the council recognizes that that is a very serious problem, and I frankly think that one concern the public had in connection with its consideration of the recent bond propositions which were defeated is the fact that we are not taking care of the property we already have. So, this is the first budget that this council has considered and had the opportunity to pass, and I am urging my colleagues to turn over a new leaf and allocate sufficient funds to SPAR to maintain the buildings and the other property that the city owns. These are apolitical, good government budget amendments. They don't have anything to do with being conservative or liberal or Republican or Democrat. They're just about being responsible with the taxpayer funds with which we have been entrusted. And so, I urge my colleagues to consider supporting both these amendments. Thank you very much.
Mayor Perkins?
I wanna jump in for a second. John, I appreciate that early vote with the sanitation fee. I also appreciate you being extremely responsible fiscally and being aggressive as well. Like, we have to be aggressive if we're gonna climb out of this hole. However, the $1 million in reserve that we put forth this year, we have to remember that August audit, where we were 1.5 in the negative. So, that $1 million aggregate is about 2.5. We all were granted four years by our citizens, so we have three additional budgets after this. My proposal is to gradually grow our reserve up to the recommended amount by raters and our own city policies by the time that we get out. So, that year, so that way, every year, we're making incremental growth within that reserve fund. I heard, somebody said the definition of leadership is making people comfortable with change. So, if we go all out right now and we take $3 million out of that Street Special Revenue Fund, there are gonna be a lot of communities in this city that needs their roads repaired, which, you know, the bond would have addressed, that are gonna be in a much worse predicament over next year, and a lot of communities that can't afford it. So, that's the reason why I have some concerns about the transfer of $3 million to the reserve. I agree with you in principle that the reserve should be healthier. I just wanna get there over a longer runway.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Councilman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of little amendments, and the one I wanted to talk about was the one to Riverfront Development for the grant researcher. I do believe that that is a valid, it'll be a valid employee to have in the future, but I'm proposing that we give the MPC back their planner this year, using that 40 plus another 25 from Riverfront Development, just so we can keep that department running and maybe get it running a little faster, and then come back and look at that other position next year. And my other thing is the, my, the resolution amending for MSI, I would like to amend, do an amendment to that for it to be 50 to MSI and 25 to African American Chamber, if people would be amenable to that.
What was that again, Councilman?
50 to MSI and 25 to African American Chamber.
Yeah.
Oh.
Sure. Mayor?
I yield to the mayor.
Mayor Perkins?
Yeah, so, two things. The MPC, it wasn't, if you look at the fiscal construct of the MPC and the budget that they get from, on the public side, it's not, it wasn't anything to necessarily cut their budget, it's to put more pressure on the parish to contribute to the MPC. Right now, the parish contributes about $300,000, we contributed $800,000, and we have the same amount of board seats. No private company is structured that way, where you get the same amount of representation, but they invest less. So, I would encourage, I think it would be, knowing our fiscal position in the parishes, I would encourage us to join together to ask the parish to fill that gap. I like the funds, and it kinda goes back to what I wanna do with the Street Special Revenue Fund, to remain dedicated to what they're supposed to be for. And that Red River Development Fund, in its bylaws, talked about economic development entities, so I wanna keep them, the funding there. And the last point about the MSI versus the African American Chamber, that's gonna be up to the council, how you all divvy it up. My suggestion was put forth because of an objective measure that I'd like to, I'd like us to go from going forward, and we can write this out in policy, but I'd much rather see our dollars invested in institutions that can justify in a granular way where each dollar is going and the impact that they're having on the community. The African American Chamber provided it, I did not get that from MSI, and maybe it can be provided. So, that's gonna be up to you all, how you decide that, but that's our justification why the budget is allocated in the manner that it is right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Councilman Butcher, I'm sorry.
So, if we allocate 50 to, you're saying 25 to the African American Chamber?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know I ain't nobody, but I don't agree, but I believe that, or is that, I don't, I'm, I think that, Mr. James, I found myself in some, in a pickle. And I, you know, unfortunate, that's unfortunate, but I'm just standing where I stood at before, and I'm against that period.
That's okay. I'll still bring you cookies, a cookie tomorrow, so we have a long meeting for our neat snacks.
Okay. We're tables, do we have any table legislation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, what's the dictation? Take up from the table, remove from the table?
What do we?
To remove from the table ordinance 161 of 2019, so that the council can further consider that legislation on the 19th of this month.
What is that, John?
This concerns the alcohol hours that we discussed...
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up in a minute.
So, we're gonna do what, 161, you wanna...
We're gonna move to remove it from the table?
Can we do that tomorrow?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, we should do that tomorrow.
We'll remind you. We'll remind you.
I'll remind you.
Just 161, what about 162?
I don't wanna take 162 off the table yet. Thank you.
Any table legislation?
I'm trying to get, I don't think so.
Okay. We don't have any, we don't have any appeals today, am I correct?
Well, Mr. Chairman, on tomorrow, we place the appeal back on for the tower, and tomorrow, based on the actions, on the, Mr. Flurry's intent, I think we will take that off, and we would ask you to remove that from the agenda tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That's the MPC case number 19-301-WSC. It was only put on there in the event that his motion was adopted.
Okay. All right. Are there any reports from any officers, boards, or committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Butcher?
Public Safety Committee met today, 10:30. We discussed three items, two of which were the ordinance 161 and, was it, what was it, John, 160?
Ordinance 161 and 162, Councilman.
Which dealt with sale of alcohol in the city limits of Shreveport. The committee moved to remove the distance, which I think that was 161. At this point, we're gonna have further discussions with the Metropolitan Planning Commission, as well as the Police Department about where we're gonna go with that. The second one dealt with the hours of operation. It was voted on by myself and Councilman Nicholson and Councilman Flurry, and it passed unanimously that we will be making a recommendation to the council that all liquor stores in the city limits of Shreveport will be closed by 11 o'clock, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, and, or that'd be Sunday through Thursday, correct?
Yes.
And then, they will be allowed to stay open till midnight on Friday and Saturday. So, we will try to get that on the agenda for the 19th meeting, I believe, which required two readings. Just a note, there were some representatives of liquor stores there, and there was really no opposition to that, that time change. The second, or the third thing that we discussed was the possible BHP building at the corner of Preston and Knight Street. We did take a tour there, the police chief and, I would say, a good number of his executive staff visited the building with us, along with Councilman Flurry and Councilman Nicholson and myself and Mr. Thompson. I'm not sure, you know, exactly, I will say that the building, I believe, fits some of the boxes, however, I think that, I'm not the police chief and I'm not the one making the decision, so I will say this, that I believe it's a consensus of the Public Safety Committee that whatever the chief decides, we will work with him in any way we can. I think one of the big things about the, is the design of the building, it's split up into four different parts. It has a center core, and then it splits off. The building is very well constructed. I think Chief Smith, who is in the construction business, went over it with a fine-tooth comb. I saw him counting a lot of ceiling tiles, so I'm assuming he was looking to see how big things were. A lot of the furniture in the building is brand-new, never been used, and is negotiable. There's some really interesting teleconferencing equipment in a conference room that could be used to, I would assume, communicate with police officers in the field or with substations, if that's where we go. I think the biggest thing that we have to discuss is, number one, does it fit the police department's needs? It is 20 acres of land, which is attractive. We do have a road project going on right, or about to start on East Preston, that could possibly give us a little bit more parking if we ever needed it. And according to the architect, who is a Shreveport resident and does business here, there is a possibility that if we ever needed expansion, we could go up to a third floor. So, there's plenty of room there for us to do what we need to do. Having said all that, we have to find a way to fund it, number one, and we have to make sure it fits the needs of the police department. So, I just think that it's a good idea for us as legislators and leaders of the city to try to find different ways. I was for proposition two, I've said it over and over again, I voted for it, but it didn't happen. So, now we're back, you know, one of the first texts I got from somebody that's usually at these council meetings was, "Well, what are you gonna do now?" Well, if you don't want me to do something, don't ask me what I'm gonna do, 'cause I'm gonna try to figure out something. And so, the mayor was extremely receptive when I called him. He had another obligation, was not able to make it, but I think the police chief represented him well, and I'm excited about the potential of this, and I will do everything in my power to try to find the money for us to be able to get this, if this is what the chief thinks he needs. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Chief, would you come up, please?
Chief, I just wanna say, I appreciate all of you, I appreciate everything y'all do. I did everything that was in my power to get this ban issue passed. I made videos, I talked on the radio, I did everything, and I know that you and Chief Warburton, when it failed, I know your hearts was hurt. But I also wanna say to y'all, keep the faith, a delay is not a denial. Sometimes, God allows things to happen just to bring us closer to Him. In my life, I don't settle for the this or for the that. If I ask God for something, I just believe that He's gonna deliver, but it's gonna be in His time. I'd just like for you to just pass the word on to all of the people, you also achieve that, a delay is not a denial. I believe that all of this is gonna happen in due season. It's just that, in America today, there's an evil spirit, there's a bad spirit, and people are just mad about whatever. It was not a bad bond deal, it's just that it was basically almost 50/50 that people say yes, people say no. But I'd just like for you and your people to know, and as well as your chief, that a delay is not a denial. And I believe that in due season, all of this is gonna come, and I just wanted to give you those encouraging words. Yes?
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk's report?
Chairman, the only thing we have is, we have an executive session this afternoon. Wouldn't we get to that point on our agenda? But I don't think there's anything on the clerk.
We are there, that was tomorrow.
It's today. Tomorrow as well. That'll be cruel and unusual tomorrow. That'll be cruel and unusual for tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay.
We need, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
On the Dennis C. Weaver versus City of Freeport, suit number 589, 217, First Traditional Court, Cato, Cato, Cusio.
All right.
You got a vote?
It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher, and the votes are, that passes.
Everybody, 52.